Calling the regular council meeting on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 to order. Note to the public that the city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice and discussion for any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It would be my honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Shimonie, our mission statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Before we get started today, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our city staff, family, and friends. If you could, please bow your heads with me for a moment. Thank you. With that, it brings us to Agenda Item Number Four, our public participation. Do we have anyone for public participation today?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Five, our Proclamations and Recognitions. And starting this would be our proclamation for Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. If Sarah and Debbie, you would like to come up front and counsel, if we can, yeah, mosey on forth.
Is this where you want us? You want us over there?
All around.
All right, perfect.
Switcheroo this puppy over here. All right. Sarah Hagigi.
Yes.
Is the Arizona State Advocate Fellow for the Coalition on Adult Basic Education. And our proclamation today, more than 51.4 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 75.1 million lack basic math skills as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And every year, one in three young adults drops out of high school. The American Action Forum estimates that by 2020, America will be short in estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. Adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career and college. And adult education programs in community colleges and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill sets of our citizens. City of Flagstaff celebrates Adult Education and Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September 19th through the 25th, 2021, as Adult Education and Literacy Week. Thank you, Sarah and Debbie. If you would like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Sure. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Hagigi. This week is Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. This is the week that we want to celebrate the resilience of our students, those students who are working on their high school equivalency diploma, and also those refugees and immigrants who want to improve their English and contribute to this society and be an active member. Our purpose for this week is to gain visibility of the good work that we are doing, and also we want to do an advocacy work to get more of these services to our members of community. I'm here with Debbie. Debbie works at Coconino Community College. They have an adult basic education program that they serve these students. I'll just pass it to Debbie.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be here today, and I'm so happy that our mayor and our council recognizes the work that we do at the level of high school equivalency and English language learners. They work so hard to try and get to where they can improve their lives and have a living wage. So we offer not only just classes with English language or helping them learn the answers for the test for the GED test, but we also offer programs that help them learn skills and trades that they can go on and be contributing members to the society. So we really appreciate all of everyone's support, and like Sarah said, you know, we just want to kind of build some awareness that we're here, we're helping people, and we really appreciate the council and the mayor for supporting us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have another recognition for today of the Flagstaff Symphony. Tim, Larry, if you'd like to come down. Celebrating its 72nd season, the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra is the largest and most active nonprofit performing arts organization in northern Arizona. And the FSO enriches, serves, and shapes the region's cultural life and acts as a positive driver of employment and tourism. And since 1950, the FSO has thrilled audiences with exciting performances, engaging education programs like the Carnegie Hall Link Up Program, and community outreach initiatives like A Flag Fourth. The Flagstaff Symphony is comprised of the finest professionals and student musicians from the region with a rich legacy of musical excellence. And like other Flagstaff cultural organizations, the FSO has been dramatically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, forced to cancel 11 live performances, and losing 79% of admission revenue last season. Responding to the pandemic with creativity and dedication, the FSO produced over 20 online videos, including "America the Beautiful" for July 4th, two outdoor chamber concerts in collaboration with Lowell Observatory and the Museum of Northern Arizona, and an online version of the Nutcracker Ballet in collaboration with NAU Music and Dance Academy that received the 2021 Viola Award for Excellence in Performing Arts. Throughout the past 72 years, Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra's vision has remained the same: to share beauty and inspire joy, to create meaningful experiences for families, friends, and neighbors, and cultivate generations of artists, educators, and leaders through its music education programs. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paul J. Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby recognize the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra as a priceless asset to our community and wish you an amazing 72nd season. Thank you so much. And if you would like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Well, Mayor and the city council were so grateful for this recognition. As you heard in the proclamation, it's been a rough year and a half, not just for the symphony, but for all of our creative organizations here in Flagstaff. And frankly, we wouldn't have survived without the city's help through the BBB taxes that you provide, as well as through Creative Flagstaff, formerly the Flagstaff Arts Council. And Discover Flagstaff recently helped us put on the traditional Fourth of July concert, our first live concert since the pandemic began, which was a terrific success, and we couldn't do that without your continued support. So we're so very, very grateful for 72 years, really, of city and Flagstaff Symphony collaboration and work together to make our city a better place to live and work. So thank you so much for this proclamation. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you. I did want to recognize that we have our board president here. This is Tim Dought from Alliance Bank. Tim, would you like to say something?
Sure. Thank you, Larry. Again, just, it's a wonderful collaboration with the city. We're honored to be recognized in this way. It's a great place to live, and we're proud to be a part of that cultural enrichment that we've provided the city, and just very thankful for the environment and getting out of the COVID and coming back together and somewhat finding healing through music as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And I will note, the first concert of the season is on Friday, where Beethoven is the, yeah, key aspect. I'll be there. You should all be there, too. So, thank you. All right, council. All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Six, our City Manager Report. City Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. The report this time is a little bit on the brief side, but that balances out the hefty report you had last time. Appended to this report is the monthly from the Water Services Division. You'll note that that's an August report, and we're always reporting a little bit after the fact, so we can give you updates on things that are or have happened or are happening. In this report, as we will endeavor to do once a month, we are recognizing some work anniversaries, and I would invite you to take a look at those. We're so proud of our many employees who are celebrating significant tenure with the city in the 10-year category, not tenure, but 10 years. We have Amy Ulliberry with, she's Recreation Leader. Congratulations, Amy. Dustin Eberhart, a police officer, also celebrating 10 years, 15 years. Juan Huerta, Equipment Operator. Richard Cinni with our Water Services. I hope I'm getting these names correct. Forgive me if I don't. Robert Cunningham, also with Water Services. All of those individuals celebrating their 15-year anniversary. And then, in starting a new format here, we would like to call out those who are celebrating significant work anniversaries, which could be defined as, you know, 30 years or more of service to our community. This month, we would like to recognize Deputy Chief Frank Higgins with our Police Department of, I'm just going to say Frank. We all know Frank on a first-name basis, but it's not out of disrespect to his rank. Frank joined the city 32 years ago, and in your packet, you have a nice photo and a very nice narrative of the many, many accomplishments that he has had. An amazing career path that started out a long time ago, prior to his law enforcement career with a two-enlistment service with the United States Marine Corps. He is a multi-talented, multi-skilled individual who brings to you a sense of humor, has a, always a permanent smile on his face, has served this community so well, was the recipient of a City Managers' Award of Employee, for Employee Excellence, along with some life-saving recognitions, and the list goes on and on. So, we're so honored to recognize him here, and we actually have him in the room today. And I thought, if I'm not overstepping boundaries here, that we might ask Deputy Chief Higgins to come up and share a word or two with you.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just like to say, it's been a good career, which I'm going to end on Friday because I'm going to retire. So, it's been a good road. Worked with some of the best people in the state, definitely working for the hardest agency in the state. So, it's been my pleasure to serve.
Deputy Chief, thank you for your service to our community.
You're welcome.
And your sense of humor.
Well, that's subjective. Some people like it.
I like it.
We all want to wish you, and we'll have an opportunity to do this again, but we want to wish you the best in the retirement ahead. Well-deserved, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah. If it's okay, I might also ask our Police Chief, Chief Musselman, to come up and maybe share any comments or perspectives he has. No stories, Chief, just good stuff.
Yes. So Frank retires this Friday with over three decades of service. He's outlived several police chiefs and given several police chiefs plenty of gray hair. Couple highlights to his career include doing a motor escort for Presidents Clinton and Vice President Al Gore from Flagstaff to the Grand Canyon. He was one of the officers that swam out into the flooded Continental Golf Course when it flooded to save a couple kids who had capsized in a boat. He says it was a little cold then, but I don't know. And then also, something near and dear to our hearts, Frank was involved in the capture of Eric Clark, and Eric Clark was the suspect who murdered our Officer Jeff Moritz several years ago. Frank's 32 years of service include everything from forensic computer examiner to on the emergency response team, bomb technician, the wards. He's got over 40 commendations and thank yous in his file, and we're going to miss him when he leaves us. His sarcastic sense of humor will certainly be missed, and he retires as the most senior employee of the Police Department and as our deputy chief over support services. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for that opportunity. If this seems like a format that you can live with, we'd like to do this once a month. Recognize all the employees who are celebrating their work anniversaries and maybe embarrass a couple along the way by having them chat with you and sharing their comments. Also in the report, some tidbits and updates from our Fire Department, some rescue attempts, or successful rescue attempts, I will say. We like pointing those out. An update from Human Resources, an update from our Police Department, Parks and Rec and Open Space and Events, which we call PROS. Some nice updates there, including some data on trail usage. Also, a little blurb about some community service with Cub Scout PAC 736, and helping out up on McMillan Mesa. Some updates with Public Works, doing some vegetative work. And I think that's a good sampling of what's in the report. What is really impressive also is the add-on monthly report from Water Services. Props to Lisa Deem and the team for putting that together. It's a nice update for you, and you can expect, as we go forward, to have these updates from various divisions letting you know what's happening behind the scenes. Counsel, Mayor, do you have any questions of me?
Counsel? Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that update, and congratulations, and thank you to everyone who was acknowledged in that report. I just wanted to just express gratitude to Brett Peterson with Capital Improvement Engineers for all of his service to our community. And that's just, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our Council Liaison Reports. How about we go back in the day when we were doing it alphabetically? We'll start with Vice Mayor.
Nothing to report, other than be on the lookout for the 10-year plan, housing plan, from the Housing Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report from the past week, but I would like to just mention that on Friday, the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council is doing its, returning to its annual field trip. Two years ago, we rafted the Colorado River between Glen Canyon and Lee's Ferry. I'm looking at the city attorney because he joined us on that adventure. This year, not something so adventurous, but we are going to parent ranch for the day, and there should be about 30 or 40 people on this field trip. So, looking forward to that.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly mention that I toured Tinkertopia about a week ago with my wife, and that was a very rewarding experience. I'd encourage everybody to get out there that has the opportunity. And then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I spent it picking in the pines and heard some really good music. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Lucky. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we doing both the Council Liaison Report and the informational item?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I'll come back to you then.
So for the Council Liaison Report, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting was canceled yesterday due to lack courtroom, and the Chair, the Chair of the Commission also resigned last Friday. And then, on behalf of the Tourism Commission, I attended the groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, rebound cutting of this pilot program, which is a partnership of Mother Road Brewing Company introducing brewery in the Northern Arizona HRM program, where students are brewing the 10th Anniversary Ale for Mother Road. So, this will signal the adult program that will be introduced next month for introduction to brew science, and also signal next year's integration of brewery in the HRM degree. So, it's, it's a visual, concrete partnership of business and academic producing, war first development of the future. It's interesting to note, though, that the current Director for Culture for Mother Road started his career in the brewery as an intern. So, eventually, the internship program with the microbrewers will also be strengthened in the future. And then for informational item, last Saturday, I had the honor to attend the Native Americans for Community Action 50th Celebration at Twin Arrows. I was in awe to witness and listen to the evolution and the history of the organization and how it is moving forward. So, thank you to all the partners of NACA. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. And my updates will be short. I also got to attend that NACA 50th Anniversary Event, and that was really a wonderful event. And thank you especially to Rose Tohe, who helped emcee the event. But also, I was able to attend the Tribal Summit Health Choice event, conference that occurred with Vice Mayor for a portion of one of the days, and my understanding is that was really well, just a really successful event all in all. And Mayor, the only thing I can think of is just that, our town hall, but maybe you want to speak to it. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Let's see. We have the five-year B-PAC Budget Retreat happening October 29th, and the public is welcome to attend. The deadline for the Beautification and Action Grants, that is coming up September 27th, and we really are encouraging the public to collaborate with the city in beautifying our neighborhood and our city in general. And a special shout-out to Eliza Kretzman, Jana Weldon, and Craig Zentco. They have been amazing. They have had a lot of completed projects in the past year, and I just wanted to be sure to do a special shout-out to them, as well as Vice Chair Labarsky. Very hard-working group. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Vice Mayor, you had another thing you wanted to add?
Yes, I had a couple of things for the informational items. On Sunday, I was lucky enough to meet the Deputy Consul General for the Mexican consulate at the Sunnyside Celebration, also the NACA 50th Anniversary Gala, and just reminding the public that NACA is having an open house this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. And anyone who has worked in a nonprofit knows what an accomplishment it is to reach one year old, let alone 50 years old. I had a nice meeting with Econa, the Economic Collaborative of Northern Arizona. And finally, just reminding people about the Festival of Science. I attended an online presentation called "The State of the Climate: Updates on Climate Science," which was excellent. And you can view this on their YouTube channel. So, you have, the Festival of Science is about halfway through, so you've still got time to get in on some of the great events. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I will add that, in addition to NACA's amazing work at 50 years of anniversary, we also have the 48-year anniversary for the Assistance League of Flagstaff, that then also has been helping to serve so many programs in our community, from providing Operation School Bell, helping with clothing and books for children, to helping survivors of domestic violence, to really, a lot of work for our homeless. And I really appreciate the work that they continue to do in our community with the nine programs that they are spearheading for our community, which 40 years ago, they started with just one. So, I appreciate that. And as Councilmember Shimonie had briefly mentioned, there is a special work session of council on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. that is specific to discussing our alternate response system, which is, as many know, as of June, the city council approved in the budget 2.3 million over three years to fund a behavioral health specialist and medic in a van responding to certain 911 calls. And we are discussing the next steps forward on Friday with service providers in our community, getting the input from the community, so that we are creating a program that best serves the community. So, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., it will be available virtually and in person, but I'm very much looking forward to having that here in City Hall council chambers. With that, I also wanted to mention the James Terrell, a 44-year resident of Coconino County in Flagstaff, has won what is considered the Nobel Prize for Sculpture, the Premium Imperial. And I wanted to provide special recognition for this individual's amazing artwork that's done in this community, as well as in museums around the world. And what an amazing award that that was and is. So, with that, I guess I'll backtrack to the Council Liaison Reports with our diversity awareness. They are very excited about our opportunity for the land acknowledgement by the city. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for presenting and pushing that forward. And I'm looking forward to the Indigenous Commission, what they would like in that. Commission, what they would like in that language, and we'll continue to move many of these initiatives forward that has been presented in these commissions. So, all right. With that, we are down to agenda item number nine, our COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor DC. I'll pull up the presentation here for you all. So, this evening, we have for you an update on the latest data, as well as the Indigenous Nations update from Rose Tohe. When we look at our weekly cases, we are seeing a decrease in the overall number of cases from the 374 to 334 between the week ending September 4th and September 11th. We continue to see the highest number of cases in our Flagstaff area. We are the blue line there at the top, followed by the tribal communities. When we look at our hospital admissions, we are seeing another uptick in the number of individuals who are being admitted due to COVID. We continue to see our largest age groups be 65 and older and ages 20 to 44. Looking at our hospital admissions, for Flagstaff Medical Center, this is a report that's created by Coconino County Health and Human Services, based on data that they received the Thursday of that weekly report. So, they're showing 0% availability for COVID patients. Again, this is a little different than what we see from the later chart from Flagstaff Medical Center's website, because this is looking at not only the number of beds, but the number of staff that are available to care for those beds. When we look at our number of COVID deaths, we did see quite a peak that week of September 4th with four COVID-related deaths, but we have had zero reported for the week of September 11th. Looking at our community transmission, we continue to be in high, seeing the 236.1 per 100,000 is lower than the week prior, but we are seeing an increase in our positivity rate, now at 7.3 for this week, and 5.2% for the COVID-like illnesses. Our number of community members here in Coconino County that are vaccinated continues to climb. This most recent number was from this last Tuesday, and it was at 58.1%. Our COVID variants, we are continuing to see an increase in the number of Delta variant that is here in Coconino County. The Alpha variant stayed static for this weekly report. These samples are still from the month of August. They have not tested any samples yet for the month of September. The number of Delta is now at 469 samples. Again, here's that chart for Flagstaff Medical Center that comes from the Northern Arizona Healthcare website. They are reporting that there are 40 positive COVID patients currently in the center, and that one is pending. And this data was as of September 20th, so was prior to, or following the report that you saw from Coconino County Health and Human Services. So, I believe Rose may be online. Rose, if you want to take it from here.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Shannon, and hello to Mayor and Council, as well as the audience and city staff. This is the information pertaining to the Navajo Nation, as well as Hopi Tribe. And according to Navajo Nation Health Facilities, these are the data for the past 16 days in between September 1st and September 16th. So, as you can see, the total amount tested is still pretty high at 12,600. And then, the negative cases, again, are also seem to be pretty good up there, as far as 10,578 confirmed positive cases are still pretty high, at least in this timeframe, but they're pretty consistent with the last 30, which is 740, 40, 44. Recoveries are still also pretty high. The deaths are at 24 right now, and this is, you know, 16 days, which is a good, I guess, an indicator from the last 30 days, which is also, I think, test that was like 24,000 or something like that. So, they're going, they're testing and trying to get the numbers still ramped up as far as testing, I think is really good. Go ahead, Shannon. The next slide.
There may be a delay. Can you see it now, Rose?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
All right. In this 15 days, Hopi tested the total amount at 736, and then negative tests at 660, positive at 52. And Hopi tribal members out of that number were 51 tribal members that had positive cases. So, those are about the same in the last 30 days as well, considering it's only 15 days this time. All right. Next, as far as Navajo Nation is concerned, the subject on public health emergency orders remain the same. This is the safer-at-home order, and they say it can be extended or changed. This also stipulates wearing a mask in public. In public, it still continues to be mandatory. Currently, there are no daily curfews for adults. Businesses on nation lands must comply with Orange Status policies and also remain at 50% occupancy. There's also a separate public order, order declaration for Orange Status relative to schools. All individuals aged 2 and older shall wear masks. And then, the health advisory notice for 35 communities include that on September 13th, Navajo Nation Department of Health, the advisory notice issued on controlled spread of COVID-19 advisory for 35 communities. And then, they're also noting that schools serving these communities need to implement layers of mitigation to meet the high level of COVID-19 community transmissions in these communities. And then, as far as the extend power lines to homes in DelCon and Tonaliya, the press release on September 10th, President Nez was reported to be joined by community members and DelCon chapter officials when he finalized this subgrant agreement between Navajo Nation and Navajo Utility Authority, Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, to extend power lines to homes in DelCon, Arizona. This provides a long-awaited electricity to at least 24, 24 families. And into a Navajo Nation Division of Community Development and the Community Development Block grant collaborated to provide this basic infrastructure for the community of DelCon, and that's for Navajo Nation to Hopi Tribe. The testing of samples confirmed the Delta and Alpha variants. On September 13th, a message from the, from Mr. Royce Jenkins, who is the Director of Public Health Authority on Hopi, stated that in a recent testing, the Hopi Health Center, the Hopi Healthcare Center, had tested 38 samples that tested positive, and of those 38 samples, 30 of them were confirmed to be the Delta variant and two were confirmed to be the Alpha variant. And then, continuing to encourage vaccines and also recommending immuno-compromised to receive additional doses of the vaccine. This is on September 8th. Again, Mr. Jenkins, Director of the Public Health Authority, he said that the CD is recommending that people are, the CDC is recommending that the people who are moderately to severely immunocompromised receive additional doses of the vaccine. And he just suggested that if you feel, people, if people feel they are at a higher risk to contact their provider and to see if they fit a criteria. And then, also, everyone over the age of 12 is recommended to get vaccinated on Hopi lens and to, for Hopi residents to contact the Hopi Health Center. So, that's what I have on the Hopi and Navajo Nation information. Thank you, Shannon. Back to you.
Thank you, Rose. So, now, we're here for council questions in order to answer anything that you might have for us.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager and Ms. Tohe. Council, do we have any questions at this time? All right. Thank you much. What that brings us down to agenda item 10, our liquor license public hearing. 10A is the consideration and action on liquor license application. Brian James Lewis Hewson, Square Root Foods, 2223 East 7th Avenue, Series 10, Beer and Wine Store New License. Staff recommended action is to hold the public hearing, which has now been opened. Do we have an individual from the police department to speak to any of the investigations regarding this?
Thank you, Council and Mayor. Ryan Turley from the Flagstaff Police Department, here to answer any questions you may have regarding the applications in front of you.
All right. Thank you. And I'm not seeing any fractions through the investigation. And would the applicant like to speak? Do they have online, or?
Mayor, we do have the applicant, applicants online, but we have not received a request to speak. They said they are available for any questions that you may have.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff? All right. Well, with that, I motion to forward the application of the state with the recommendation.
Actually, Mayor, we do need to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, and I would like to motion to forward the application of the state with the recommendation for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And 10B is the consideration and action on liquor license application. Ryan Whitner Anderson from Target, 1650 South Milton Road, Series 9 Liquor Store, all spirited, spirituous liquor, new application, opening up the public hearing. Any information from staff on this regard?
Mayor, thank you, Ryan Turley, again. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is the, has the applicant had any requests to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing and motion to forward the application of the state with the recommendation for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, moving right along here. We are down to agenda item 11, our routine items. 11A is the recognition of bus art winners and ratification. Beautification and Public Art Commission recommendations for bus art project on climate change and hope. Staff recommended action is to ratify the contracts awarded by the Beautification and Public Arts Commission related to a bus art project on climate change and hope. Thank you, Ms. Kretzman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I am Eliza Kretzman, the Beautification, Arts, and Sciences Manager here at the city. And I am here today to bring you our bus art project focused on climate change and hope to recognize the selected artists and for the ratification of the contracts for the selected artists. So, first, a bit of background on the project. The spark for this project came from our commissions, the Beautification and Public Art Commission and the Sustainability Commission, who brought it to staff. This project was led by an AmeriCorps Vista member, so I want to thank Erin Kazmarowski for her work on this project. And the reason we focused on hope rather than messages of despair is that studies show that that actually creates more prolonged action towards climate change. And a little bit about how the process worked, we had about 20 applicants, and five artists were selected by community members and moved forward for approval by the Beautification and Public Art Commission, and these are for display on mountain line buses. Artists receive a $750 fee for their designs, and the art will be on display for about one year. So, now, I'd like to move on to recognize the artists by sharing their designs and a brief biography of each in alphabetical order. So, first, we have Luke Giles. Luke is a senior at Flagstaff High School. Luke writes in his bio, "I have a technical mind. I love graphic design, and I have a big soft side. The things that matter most to me are finding love, loving a job that I will work for for the rest of my life, and cherishing the things that I already have." Next up is Dana Camberg. Dana is a local artist best known for her graphic illustration and portraiture work. Her work has been featured in the Hartbox Gallery here in Flagstaff, and also in a salon show in Sedona, and in Create Magazine. Dana was involved in the recent mural for Salsa Brava off of Route 66. Looking ahead, she intends to continue her work in community-based projects and further her personal exploration in utilizing portraiture as a means of representation and advocacy. Nate Nice is a photographer and a graphic designer from Arizona who gets his inspiration from the natural landscapes of the earth. His goal is to continue exploring landscapes around the world, showcasing one-of-a-kind locations, and emphasizing the importance of protecting them. Beau Arayanes Ortiz is a recent high school graduate who works in the fields of graphic design and visual arts. He earned certificates in graphic design and Adobe Photoshop at Flagstaff High. He's passionate about climate change issues and hopes to spark change with his designs. And last but not least, we have Kaylee Quick. Kaylee is a Flagstaff-based artist that uses a variety of mediums to create work, both physical and digital. Kaylee graduated with a degree in art education in 2009 from NAU, and currently teaches graphic design at Flagstaff High School. And in fact, some of the students, some of her students are the artists you see selected this evening. So, finally, to recap today's item, we are bringing this forward to recognize the selected artists and to ask you for ratification of the artist's contracts for this project, because as we prepared for this item, our legal team felt we needed these to be ratified retroactively by council. You'll also see a forthcoming item for an ordinance change related to artwork and the Beautification and Public Art Commission in the regular agenda addressing these fairly minor technical changes. Thus, we now ask you for your ratification of the artist's contracts and to join us in recognizing the selected artists. So, thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kretzman. This is beautiful art, and I really appreciate the message of hope, because too much, we hear so much despair over the climate change issue. And these images definitely speak to that mission that selected these individuals for this, for these awards. So, Council, do you have any questions at this time? Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eliza. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Luke, Dana, Nate, Beau, and Kaylee for their efforts. This is beautiful work, and I can't wait to see this on our buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. With that, I'd like to motion to ratify the contracts awarded by the Beautification and Public Arts Commission related to a bus art project on climate change and hope.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have a public comment request for this item.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, we do. My apologies. Getting ahead of myself. Ms. Robin Cass, would you like to come speak? My apologies. I have papers everywhere up here. I need to be a little more organized.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I actually wrote the wrong number on my card. I actually wanted to comment on the vehicular noise in the neighborhoods, and I think I just wrote the wrong number, so I'll wait for that to come around.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Nope. I'll hold on to this and make sure. I'll put it over here, so I don't forget this thing. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that this is a really good example of several commissions working together, working with mountain line, working with the schools, and this is how it should be done. So, I would like to So I would like to second your motion to approve the contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. With the motion on the table, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We are down to Agenda Item 11B, our update and review working calendar and future agenda item requests. Ms. Salzberg.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's great to see you today. I'm Stacy Salzberg. I'm your city clerk. So council has requested periodic updates on the working calendar and pending future agenda item requests. So I'm here today to just provide a brief update on where we're at. So on the screen here in front of you, you'll see our current working calendar. I'm not going to bore you by going through each one of our upcoming meetings specifically, but you will note, as I kind of scroll through this a little bit, we have some very full agendas coming our way in the next few weeks. There is a lot of great work that's going on with staff, and we're looking forward to bringing those things to you for discussion and consideration. Some of the items of note or interest that are coming very soon are the 10-year housing plan. We have an upcoming retreat next week on various infrastructure needs. We have the Buellah University roadway project, as well as the ARPA discussion, just to name a few. But there is a lot going on right now. And so if you'll bear with me for just a moment as I scroll through this, I know it's dizzy, but I wanted to bring your attention to our future agenda items. Sorry. Okay. Let me just. All right. So here you can see that there are a number of pending fare items, both new requests, so that's this Needs 3 and Support category, as well as some that are, you know, currently being formulated and vetted by staff. So this is that Seeking Counsel Direction column that you see here. And we're hoping to get these items back to you soon, but they, you know, it's taking some time for us to put them together, make sure that we've got everything in line before we present them to you. But they are here, we are working on them. And then we're also working on getting these recent fare requests brought forward at a council meeting to get some feedback from council and if there's support for a larger conversation. But as I mentioned before, there's a lot of things that are kind of going on right now, a lot of big projects that we're working on, so it is taking just a little bit of time. And so, sorry, we're also looking at possible ways of maybe combining some of these requests with other things that are coming forward as they might be related, and, you know, hopefully we can, you know, knock a few of them out at one time. So at that point, I'm going to just stop real quick, see if there's any questions on kind of what's currently pending, maybe some things that we have coming up in the future, but I'm happy to entertain those now.
Yeah, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Salzberg, for this thorough presentation. I am just curious, whatever happened to my fair item about comprehensive cost recovery
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. My apologies, I don't know that I have an answer as to what happened to that, but I do recall that fair. I will do some research and get that back on there, so I do apologize. But thank you, that's exactly why we're here in front of you, to make sure we're crossing all those Ts and dotting those Is, so I will make a note of that for sure.
Thank you, Ms. Salzberg.
Thank you.
You, Ms. Salzberg. Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you help the public understand where they can see these agendas anytime they want to take a look at what's coming up on our agenda?
Most definitely. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And actually, that was my next note after questions. So our working calendar is posted every Friday afternoon on the city's website. There is a kind of council meeting, city council page, that has a link that goes directly to that working calendar. The one caveat that I put out there is that this working calendar literally changes multiple times a day, so what you may see posted on the website might change slightly week to week, but that's a great place for you to see all of the stuff that's upcoming, anything that's currently pending, and kind of this future agenda item request section, but it is fully accessible by the public.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Salzberg? Councilmember Salas.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I just want to get it on the record that we got a message from Mr. Tatter, our Management Services Director, that the cost recovery policy is scheduled for October 9th work session. Thank you.
Excellent. See, I had already scheduled it, which is why I took it off this list, so thank you, Mr. Tatter.
Excellent, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you much. That brings us down to Agenda Item 12A. This is the consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff clarifying the duties of the Beautification and Public Art Commission and clarifying that the procurement code manual procedures apply to expenditures for arts and sciences and beautification funds, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, Sterling Solomon, City Attorney, always an honor to present to you, as always, even our city clerk gets ahead of herself. She's so good at what she does that she doesn't know she's already done it. I, on the other hand, kind of catch things on the back end and try to bring things to council for clarification, and that's exactly what this is. Ordinance 2021-22 is simply some housekeeping or some cleanup more than anything else. A shout out to Anya Wendell, Senior Assistant City Attorney in my office, who while working with E V staff, identified an inconsistency between the Beautification and Public Art Commission, B P A C ordinance, and the procurement code manual. And to rectify this inconsistency, Anya has drafted ordinance 2021-22, and we have it on for a first read tonight. It's a slight amendment that basically brings those two codes together, the city code on B P A C and the procurement code manual. It will help ensure that small dollar amount projects can be processed efficiently while at the same time giving council greater flexibility to ask the B P A C Commission for their recommendations, including small art projects that are below $50,000, such as landscaping projects and those smaller projects. So the proposed ordinance is consistent with current practices. We just needed to make that housekeeping and cleanup, and all you have to do is the first read tonight, the second read and approval on October 5th. Of course, shout out, major shout out to Eliza Kretzman, Janet Weldon, David McIntyre, and Heidi Hansen from E V. They do great work, and the commission does great work because our staff facilitates that, and they've been great to work with us on this little cleanup matter as well. They're available if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do we have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, City Attorney. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we read ordinance 2021-22 by title only for the first time.
I will provide a second to that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We're down to Agenda Item.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We just need to read that ordinance.
Oh, my goodness, I'm, yep, I'm stepping on your hose here. Please, city clerk.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, clarifying the duties of the Beautification and Public Art Commission and clarifying that the procurement code manual procedures apply to expenditures of arts and sciences and beautification funds, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Salzberg. Now we're down to Agenda Item 12B, which is the consideration and adoption of Resolution number 2021-43, an ordinance number 2021-21, a resolution of Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled nuisance noise code amendment, in an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 6, Police Regulations, Chapter 6-08, Noise Control. By adopting, I reference that certain documents entitled nuisance noise code amendments providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution number 2021-43 by title only. Deputy Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a result of your request or direction on the June 1st council meeting to develop a nuisance noise ordinance, working with Mary Ann Sullivan from the City Attorney's Office. We looked at sample noise ordinances from quite a few municipalities throughout the state, saw an underlying theme, and then we worked together to develop our own ordinance along the same type guidelines that other cities are using already. On two sides of it, we have the business, residential, and commercial noise ordinance. Then there's also a subsection covering vehicles. On the business, residential, and commercial side, we set noise limitations in each zone separately, increasing the amount of decibels that are authorized depending from residential being the lowest to industrial, which is the highest allowable noise levels. And there are also different limitations depending on the time of the day or the night in these areas. In the residential areas, it goes from 45 decibels at night to 55 decibels during the day. In the commercial zones, it goes from 55 to 65, and in the industrial areas from 60 to 70. The noise will be measured using meters and standards from the American National Standards for Noise Measurement based on the U.S. Department of Commerce National Bureau of Standards. These are those Type 1 meters I talked about during the previous conversation with you on June 1st, and they will be measured on an approved sound level meter that satisfies those requirements. And if we have a complaint in a area that borders two different zones, say residential and a commercial zone, the stricter regulations will take effect in those areas. And then the vehicle noise ordinance, it specifically cares of vehicles' noise, and it will be based on vehicle and weight and speed going down the road, and it'll be based on a distance of 50 feet from the center of the roadway lane. If the vehicle is a G V W above 6,000 pounds driving down the roadway, 35 miles an hour or less, it will be restricted to 88 decibels. If they're going in excess of 35 miles an hour, it will be restricted to 92 decibels. Any other vehicle below that will be restricted to 82 decibels at 35 miles an hour or less, up to 86 decibels going in excess of 35 miles an hour. The options the council has on this is you can adjust the time restrictions within the ordinance if you want to have a earlier time for the evening to take effect or a later time. The levels as proposed in the ordinance, you can adjust those as you see fit, depending on what you are comfortable with. And then the speed limit demarcations for the vehicles can be adjusted up or down as The proposed penalties and the process for this, same penalties as currently in the nuisance party ordinance. There will be civil fines only. First offense will be $250. A second offense within 120 days is a $500 fine, and a third or subsequent offense after that would be a $1,000 fine within, in that 100-day period. Again, there are some options that the council has. You can change the amount of fines or the time period that the offenses occur for the second or third offenses, and then the civil hearing procedure in the city court to challenge any citations will be spelled out in the ordinance as well. What this ordinance does not cover, it doesn't change any of the ordinances currently in place for special events. We've already got a pretty robust special events process that is working very well for the city, and it will not affect the nuisance party ordinance that is also in effect. So with that, we'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. We do have a few comment cards I'd like to take first. Ms. Cass, was this the, there you were wanting to speak to, rather? Then I will start with you.
Good afternoon, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Robin Cass. I wanted to just come down today and speak briefly on this topic. I've been a Flagstaff resident for 39 and a half years, and I live just a couple of blocks from here. I have to say that over the last five or six years, I've noticed a significant increase in vehicular noise or nuisance noise, and this isn't the normal noise that you would expect living in an urban area of Flagstaff. And it's, it's actually affected my lifestyle and, well, as well as lifestyles of some of my friends. And in, in a personal way, in a personal way, and in, not very often, but has affected my well-being. And so it's one of the reasons why I'm going to be building a house outside of town starting in the spring. But I just wanted to come down and comment about this issue and support further conversation about it, and I'm hopeful for a resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cass. I have Michael Collier.
Mayor and Council, thank you. I am Michael Collier, and I live on West Cherry Avenue. The banner that opens up your webpage, as read by Adam Shumoni, states that "The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all." It sounds good. If that's true, why do we tolerate unnecessarily loud vehicles in Flagstaff streets? I'm not talking about semis or Santa Fe locomotives. I'm not addressing construction and industrial noise. There are plenty of times when ambulances or fire engines run with their sirens on. God bless them. None of these are what I'm talking about. I'm just asking you to consider our community's tolerance for unnecessarily loud car and Last winter, I worked down south for a couple of months. I was awakened at 3:00 a.m. by screaming motorcycles a quarter mile or more away. The streets, I realized, had become raceways. It wasn't like that when I went to school there in the 80s. If the City of Flagstaff tolerates the same problem, will our future sound any better here? I've tried and failed to understand why some people choose to drive obnoxiously loud vehicles. They seem to have just one message, "Look at me, look at me." Individuals do have a right to be heard, but at the same time, we need to be considerate of each other. And when this basic consideration is no longer the norm, it's time to rewrite the law. I've talked to council about this issue before. Thank you for asking the police to come up with a solution. Their suggested thresholds for illegal noise are not out of line with other communities, though I notice that Boise does restrict noise to 92 decibels, measured at 20 feet, not 50 feet. I understand that the proposed ordinance relies on decibel metering rather than judging audible distance or just using common sense. Perhaps precise sound measurement is required in a courtroom for prosecution. I just hope that the unwieldiness and the modest expense don't end up discouraging enforcement. As you consider this issue tonight, I'd like to know, how much unnecessary noise are we willing to tolerate before giving up on another aspect of the quality of life in Flagstaff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. I have Rose Hoak. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Thanks, everybody. It's really nice to finally see you all again in person, I think. And thanks to the Police Department, Officer Higgins, for the attention to this matter. I, yeah, I live up here in Townsite neighborhood, and for the past year and a half, I would say I have never, ever heard the kind of noise we are hearing. This, to call it a nuisance, is a mild euphemism. It is an abomination to our lives. I know you've heard from many residents, I know this is happening all over town, but we know it because we live right by Thorpe Park, and I can guarantee you, in the next two hours, if we were up there, we could set our watches by the four or five cars who are the main offenders. I see them every single day. There's a little red car, there's a little white car, there's a little silver car. I mean, I know them all, and so do all my neighbors. It's out of hand. I hope, I hope that this amendment to this ordinance will do something to help, but what it all is going to come down to, and we all know that, is enforcement. And if I can take two seconds to tell a little anecdote, so I rode, ride my bike, I'm going across Route 66, I rode my bike through a walk sign. I rode my bike through a walk sign. To my bad fortune, there was a policeman right behind me who pulled me over and said, "Why did you run that red light?" And I said, "Wow, I had no idea." The walk light was on, blah, blah, blah. So, long story short, $200 later, a session in traffic school. I learned my lesson a hard way. I guess it is illegal to ride my bike on a walk light. I never, ever do that now. So the point is, we need a deterrent. If you were up there right now, you would get these people going 50 miles an hour in a 25-mile zone on a road, narrow road that's used by bicyclists, walkers, kids, you name it. And in my heart of hearts, the horrible thing I think about is somebody getting hurt and hurt bad. We do not want that to happen, ever. And I would like to see a deterrent of a fine, like he spelled out, just for speeding. And then say, "Hey, by the way, did you know, illegal modified mufflers are illegal in the state of Arizona? Do a little education." And then if we have this ordinance behind us, we can do something to get to these people and make examples and just say, "Hey, you cannot get away with this. This is affecting all of us in a really bad way for many reasons, and it's much more than a nuisance. It's a serious safety issue, too." Okay, I guess that's it. I know you don't have any questions from me, right?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
You do? Hi, Becky.
Hi, Rose. I'm wondering whether you and Dr. Collier are comfortable with the levels as outlined in this.
Well, if they work, yeah. I don't have, I mean, he's got a decibel meter he goes around with, I don't. And so I don't know what that 88 or 92 is going to sound like. It seems counterintuitive to me that they would get to have a bigger decibel level if they're speeding or going faster, because they want to go faster, because then they can hear it better. I, too, don't know what's driving this. So I don't know. I don't know the answer. I'm sorry. I wish, what I really think is whatever we have, it's got to, there's got to be some teeth in it. There's got to be a policeman stationed up there on Thorpe at this hour of the day, catch him, do something, and they'll stop because it's expensive. You know, it's expensive to get a $250 ticket or whatever it might be. Yeah, I think people are gonna, are you? We're tag teaming you here. I don't know if that's legal, but anyway, I can't answer it directly because I'm not that familiar with how all the decibel stuff would work.
Councilmember Daggett, I, having been addressed in your question, I thought I would come up and say, I went to the very modest trouble of buying a sound meter, not just a cellphone, but a sound meter, and have spent some time recording decibel levels. And I can tell you that I measured a high of 104.7. Interestingly, that was about a 70-year-old couple in a convertible Porsche. It isn't just your typical backward hat, high schooler. Commonly motorcycles measured, I'm guessing 50 feet away, it might have been slightly less, were in the high 90s. I wonder why motorcycles are put in with the 6,000-pound categories, because I've heard quiet motorcycles. They tend to be BMWs, but I've heard them. I had a person zoom up in downtown, parked his bike, and I walked up to him, and I said, "Why did you hurt my ears? Because it hurt." And he said, "Oh, it's for safety." And I said, "Well, then why are your tailpipes pointing backwards? I don't buy it." Yeah, there's, there's times when I've recorded over 92 decibels, but I would encourage you to consider looking hard at those levels. I noticed that the town of Gilbert and Tempe are exactly the same numbers, but I'm not sure we need to go along just with those numbers because other towns have adopted them. There is a precedent, yeah, that helps, but I would use common sense. If, if you're out on Santa Fe or San Francisco coming out of the university or by high school, and you're hearing objectionable noises at, at 80 or 85 decibels, I would counsel you to take that into consideration to what you finally decide on.
Thank you. All right, Council, we'll open this up for any questions of staff or discussion in general. Councilmember McCarthy, start with.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my first question is for the Police Department. If we don't settle this tonight, you may have to delay your retirement. But, but all kidding aside, I have a serious question. How about enforcement of this? I mean, it sounds like, you know, you're just going to have a special squad that looks for noise, or is each police officer going to have a sound meter? It sounds like it might be very unpractical to have to have a sound meter when you, you know. When I was a kid, they didn't use sound meters, but I had a '57 Chevy that was kind of hopped up. Now I go for gas mileage. Back then, I was going, I was just, I was a kid, okay? And I got tickets for loud mufflers. And similar to what the woman mentioned, so what did I do after I got three tickets for loud mufflers? I went up to the Chevy dealer and bought a factory muffler and put that on, and that quieted down my car, and I did that. So my, my question is, I'm interested in the practicality of how we enforce this ordinance or whatever. Do we have to have an exact number on it with a meter? Or can we just say, it's sort of like one of the Supreme Court justices said once, that he could not define pornography, but when he saw it, he knew what it was. And I think in a, in a case like this, it's like, if, if a car is completely out of the ballpark on noise, even if you don't have a number, there can be some enforcement. So would you please comment to that? Thank you.
Ideally, what I envision is having all my traffic unit trained and equipped with the meters, so while they're working a speed zone, they can also passively work for noise violations by having a decibel meter on. I also envision having members of the patrol squads trained in this as well, because it can address some of the bar noise complaints that we get downtown and things of that nature. The problem with not having an upper decibel limit is it becomes a completely subjective law and becomes overly broad. It becomes very difficult to enforce, and it gets, it's very difficult to win out on appeal if somebody tries to appeal the decision of that. This way, we've got the dead limit, you can't exceed this. We've got the people trained and certified in use of the meters. We have a meter that meets the certification level that we need, so when we do issue a citation, we will win through propretence of the evidence because it's a, it's a civil violation to be very hard to overcome, whereas if we have a subjective ruling, it's really difficult to prove in court.
And just to add to that, you know, in terms of being able to prosecute, one person's view of, of something that is offensive or a nuisance may not necessarily be somebody else's, and so that is why having an objective standard makes things easier for the officers to be able to cite, especially with regard to not only the vehicle noise, but we are receiving lots of complaints with regard to some business noise. And so being able to go to the business and say, "This is the level, here it is, you're exceeding it," and go from there, is a lot easier for enforcement purposes on the part of the officers as well as in court for the prosecutors, or for the officers to be able to address those if there are civil hearings.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your comments on that. I would like to talk to Mr. Collier's comments that some of these cars hurt his ears. My understanding is that anything over 85 dB A will cause hearing damage, permanent hearing damage to your ears, especially if it's on a repeated basis. All right, moving on. I believe it was my future agenda item request that brought this to council. And I do think it's a very important issue, and, and I'm really glad that we've started the process. I have a lot of comments on the policy side of this and on the technical side of it. Just for background for people who don't know it, I'm a mechanical engineer. I have a degree in mechanical engineering from the U of A. Go Wildcats! And I also did my master's thesis, go Sun Devils, on noise issues. So I have quite a bit of background on noise issues and on the technical side of this. I have a lot of, of technical comments that I've started. I haven't finished that process. For instance, the definition of decibels, it's incorrect. It's close, but it's incorrect. So I've written up some suggested wording that will correct that. So what I would like to do, let me put it this way. When we said that we wanted staff to bring this back to us, what I anticipated is that we'd have a work session on this, instead of like, well, here's, here's a draft law, approve it or not. So I guess we have two options. One is, we could do a first read on this tonight and then work out the details before the second read, or we could actually have a work session on it. I, I guess my preference would be to have a work session on it, because, let's be honest, this is a very difficult, and I, I think the Police Department, our legal staff would agree, to get your arms around this issue in a way that'll hold up in court, which is practical for the police, and that will improve the noise scape, the soundscape, of Flagstaff. That's a complicated and very challenging issue. This is not an easy issue. And I, I, I think back to when we did some noise ordinance changes for what we allowed at festivals and things like at Thorpe Park. That took a long time, and we got negotiations going on between event producers and neighborhood people, and, but we came to a successful end on that. And I think we ended up with something that the promoters can live with and that improved life for the neighborhood. So I would like to suggest that we have a work session on this, and I will probably spend a lot of my own personal time addressing some of these technical issues and trying to evaluate just the practical side of it. You know, like 100 feet, I think it's, there's a 50 feet from the center of the lane. Well, you know, on my street, that would be completely impractical. The setback in my front yard is only 25 feet, just as one little example. So I would suggest that we bring this back. I'll be honest, I'm not prepared to give substantive questions and detailed responses tonight. Maybe I should be, but the last week has been very busy for me, and I haven't really had time to study this in the detail that I think I owe myself and that I owe the citizens of this city. So I'll throw it out to council. I would like to delay this discussion. This is an important issue, but it is not a critical issue like we need to get it done in the next two weeks. So my proposal is that we have a work session on this, and if that's not acceptable to council, then I guess we could at least, I think, Sterling, I think I would say, table it for two weeks. Is that the proper way to phrase it?
Or a motion to postpone.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to postpone this for six months. I'm thinking a few weeks or something.
And, and for clarification, I just want to point out, Mayor, and Councilmember McCarthy and Council, this, this actually started as a citizens petition that evolved into a larger discussion, at which point council actually asked for an ordinance to be brought back directly. I think that's the reason there wasn't a work session. Of course, that's where we're at tonight, at a first read. You can table it, you can postpone it for longer. I wouldn't recommend you do that for a long period. If you want to have a work session and request further discussion, you can do that as well. You can do a first read and have more discussion at the second read. All those options are available to you from a procedural perspective.
So I'll throw it back to the city manager and to the other council members about how we can move forward in this. But I'll be honest, I am not ready to move forward on this, and I really do care about this issue, and I want it done right. I don't, I don't want to do it half-baked, so to speak, and then found out that we didn't really make any progress or that we made it more complicated. You know, I'll point out that I did read this over yesterday. I did read it and study it to some extent, and it does remove some of the existing rules. And in some cases, I think those existing rules might be more restrictive than what we're coming up with now. So anyway, a lot of questions. I'd like to step back and study this. I'll shut up for a little while.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, speaking of questions, the one you did ask was the use of the word "table." Yes, under our rules, that means the next meeting, which is the next work session next week. So I wouldn't use the word "table," because then that turns that work session into a special meeting, and we don't really want to go there. So it would be a motion to table until the next regular, sorry, a motion to postpone until the next regular council meeting.
So if, if I did that, that would be two weeks.
Correct. So if... Or, or another date if you wanted it, you know, in four weeks or whatever.
So am I alone on this, or does the other council members have some sympathy for poor old Jim?
I'll start with Vice Mayor, and then to Councilmember Salas.
I'm fine with postponing so that we can have more time to, to think about it and talk about it. I have a question for staff, so I'm wondering where that comes in to where we are in the discussion.
You're welcome to ask.
Thank you. Thank you. So staff, obviously, there are shops in town that are selling these mufflers to automobile owners. Is there, what happens with that? Do we talk to them, or are they not even included in the discussion?
They're not included in the discussion. The intent of this is not to limit somebody's ability to buy anything. I can go online and buy headlights, put them on my car, that are illegal in the state. It's the Police Department's job to point that out to the person and have them come into compliance with state law. I personally don't care if they bought them. That's on them. I just need to correct the issue if it's in violation of the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am in favor of postponing this to a later date, but I do have a lot of questions too, which can be answered now if staff is available to answer them or the future discussion. First is, are there any, any jurisprudence cases or in terms of experience from other cities and towns who have had a similar noisiness in ordinance, and what were the challenges and successes in the implementation of such an ordinance? Second, I am more concerned about the, the budgetary implication. I want, I would prefer a more budgetary impact analysis. We could see that there's training costs of 625 and recertification class every 24 months of 325 for police officers, plus the cost of the decibel meters, and which we don't have any money in the budget in the current fiscal year. So looking forward, what, what is the long-term budgetary implication on this and also on the workload of our current law enforcement workforce, mindful of the fact that we have 30% vacancy? And just, just experiencing a ride-along last month, you know, I was, I was, I had, it was a humbling experience to see our police officers' response to domestic violence, potential OD, and even assault. So when you're faced with calls like that, the nuisance call will be obviously, you know, in the bottom of the calls. I do, I do believe that needs to be addressed. I myself had a friendly neighbor who would love to ramp up that whatever it is that makes sounds in the... that whatever it is that makes sounds in the middle of the night. And I'll be awakened, and many times I tried to get out and take a photo or video of the vehicle, but it's gone. So I do, I do believe that this issue needs to be addressed, but has to be in a more comprehensive and also mindful of our existing resources and the budgetary implication of this cost eventually. Thank you.
So with regard to your question on jurisprudence, I didn't find anything. I can do a more extensive search with the other existing ordinances within the state of Arizona to see if there's anything specific that would give us any more guidance.
And in regards to workload, officers are going through these calls already. This would give us the tools to be able to address them successfully, to hopefully get people into compliance. Without it, then we're back to just doing subjective measures, trying to get people to voluntarily comply with what we're asking them to do. It really leaves us without the tools to properly address the issue. As far as budgetary, let's say I have 20 officers equipped to address this issue, spread them out without the patrol squads, so they can address it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I would estimate $20,000 to outfit 20 officers, get them certified and get them a meter. So roughly $1,000 ahead to do this. And that's just a ballpark figure.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan, or you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. I want to thank everyone else on council who's had a chance to speak already. Your sharing my concerns and your comments echo what I'm thinking as well. Councilmember McCarthy, I'm fine with pushing this back so we can have a more thoughtful deliberative discussion about it. But as we prepare for that, I would like to have, I do have a question for you guys. Could you walk us through exactly what the sound recording equipment is? Where it's placed on the vehicle? How you compensate for using it in some vehicle as opposed to not being in a vehicle? And maybe you can just clear some confusion for me, because what I'm picturing in my mind is your typical officer on patrol, looking for speeders. They're sitting in their driver's seat. But windows would get in the way of sound recording levels. I'm just wondering if you could just walk me through an instance where an infraction occurs and a recording device is used to capture that and record and measure it, and how that works in different scenarios?
Basically, when it comes to addressing vehicle noise, I would focus mainly on our traffic unit. These are our motorcycle officers, so they're going to be in an open-air vehicle. The meter itself is a handheld unit, and it's not really a recording unit. It's a meter. It just...
It's a measuring device, okay.
The pressure wave that it's receiving, that's sensitive to the human ear and comes up with a reading. And if it's a violation, the officer has reasonable suspicion to stop that car and address it.
So how does that work if the police officer is inside the cabin of a vehicle?
Simply roll the window down.
Okay. That's not going to change the sound performance? I mean, I notice that it's quieter when I'm inside my vehicle than when I'm outside of it.
As long as you're removing the obstruction, it should have minimal impact on the amount of sound reaching the officer. And a majority of officers patrol with their windows down as a normal course of business.
Wonderful, great. And this is just a, it's a handheld unit? Is it something that's part of the utility belt now? Or do you have to?
No, it'd just be something, a piece of equipment like a radar gun, something that they use when they're in a position to be able to use it. An officer can set up a motorcycle 50 feet off the traveled portion of the roadway, 50 feet off the center line, and be able to work speed and be able to get readings for vehicles for sound and have a viable violation they could address at that time.
So they have to actively be looking for infractions in order for this process to work? It's not like they're going to get binged to, the device isn't going to turn itself on or...
No.
Provide an alert, okay? Thank you. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to work through exactly the physicalities of how this is going to work, because I think we're all understanding of the clunky nature of how enforcement's going to work on this, and I'm just trying to create a picture in my head. So I appreciate you walking me through that.
Also, I think too, this would be more complaint-driven. So when we do get complaints from citizens, then officers can go to that area. Similar to their speeding in a particular area, then we kind of saturate that, go to that specifically with regard to the vehicle noise, with regard to business noise, that it's also going to be more probably complaint-driven and/or, you know, downtown walking beat patrol, things like that.
Gotcha. Well, on that note, and since I still have the mic, I do have one more question. And this is related to the public commenters talking about a specific white car, blue car, red car, silver car. Are you guys aware of those perpetrators, for lack of a better word? And are you able to go check that out?
That area's been a complaint zone in the past, and it's been addressed by our traffic unit. Our officers are aware of the area, and they're out the rest of time permits. But keep in mind, we are a call-driven agency. We have to prioritize the calls by life safety, and a noise complaint is going to hold longer than something that's got a life safety issue involved, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
I do think this is a very important topic and warrants a work session, so I would vote for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Okay, I'll go ahead and jump in. Couple of comments. Thank you for the presentation and your work on this. Thank you to the public who have brought this forward. I do have a few questions, and I do support us moving forward with a work session on this topic, because I too have a lot of thoughts and concerns and trying to understand the costs of doing all this, and if we have the bandwidth, and what is it that we're sacrificing by adding this to the list of things that we're going to regulate? But that's a bigger discussion. But quick question, would we be able to adjust the limits if we were to pass something a year later if we found out it wasn't meeting our needs?
Yes, you could always come back and amend the ordinance to make any sort of changes if that is occurring.
Okay. And I would like to further explore in our future conversations about this, the bandwidth concern that we have at FPD to add this to our list of things to do, because as we're talking about it, it sounds very labor-intensive, and I am somewhat concerned. I think for the commercial properties, it'll be a lot easier to address. It's not like we had to catch them at that peak of the revving of their engine, you know? But if you could walk me through what it looks like to catch someone, like a, someone who's a violation, like, let's say you get a call, there was a noise complaint on my block. Someone drove by really fast and made a, you know, real loud noise. How do you respond?
Well, basically, the way the traffic unit has been responding to issues of this nature is they have a traffic enforcement zone that's assigned to one of the motor officers. And having been a motor officer for about 19 years off and on, how I would do it if I was enforcing both speed complaints and noise complaints, I would set up the motorcycle in an area that is 50 feet off the center line, so I know I'm within the statute for enforcement of noise violation. I would set my radar up on the bike, watching the oncoming traffic. And if a vehicle is traveling faster, it's going to be putting out more noise. And I would be watching both the radar, which can alert at a specific speed, and watching the needle on the noise meter to see if I have a violation of the noise statute as well. And now I've got reasonable suspicion to stop the car and address it. It doesn't necessarily cause more work, because I can do both things at the same time. I don't see that really as an issue. My guys can multitask pretty well, especially the motor officers, because they're coordinated.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. I guess my, I guess my concern would be like more to the bandwidth, but go ahead.
Just to kind of address, so, you know, in a situation if somebody calls and says, you know, "I saw this violation by this vehicle," the more information they can provide to law enforcement, the better off they'll be in terms of being able to actually investigate and address that. A white car is not going to help. So a license plate number, or the white car travels this time of day, every day in this area, then we may be able to go back to that area to get that information. So being able to get from the public, you know, the complaints that will be able to allow law enforcement to follow up with as much specific information as possible. And, you know, citizens themselves might be able to also, you know, be able to identify individuals who are violating. Mr. Collier indicated he has his own sound meter. So somebody, that type of evidence would still be admissible in court if that person can say, "I can testify to the fact that I had the meter out, and this is what it was." There might be some more issues with regard to regulation of that meter. So if we do have them with the PD and the officers, they have the training, the quality kind of control measures in place to be able to say that they've tested the meter, that it meets certain requirements. So that's going to be more helpful evidence in court as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Just a couple more points really quick. When it comes back, it'd be great if we can talk about the different levels of civil offense and the different costs associated in the timeline. I know you said that there's some level of discrepancies there, and I'm very curious to explore that, specifically on, you know, potentially like the lower end of the costs.
So this is what's proposed in the ordinance as it is now. Like I said, what we did is we took what we already have in the party nuisance ordinance and put that in there. But the options here would be for you to change these amounts to any amount you would like to change them to, or the number of days for first, second offense to any number of days that you would like to choose them. You know, we just made that as a suggestion and a proposal, because we were asked to bring a draft forward to you. And so that's what we did with this. And so the options there for council are to choose whatever monetary limits you would like to see within the ordinance and any day, day limit.
Totally. And so when it comes back, I'd like to see a few options if possible.
Well, there's these options. There would be to make it higher or lower than 250, to make the days either, you know, on 20 or...
I guess, and I can follow up with an email if that's preferred with my specific request, but I'd be curious to see more of a relaxed approach rather than a first offense of 250. I think that can be really detrimental to some.
Okay.
City Manager?
Thank you. I won't weigh in substantively, but I have a couple of comments on process that I might suggest. To the last comment first, I don't think it's reaching out too far to say that if we get too lax on the fines, that enforcement's going to be more difficult. As it is now, this will take time to see results. There won't be an immediate outcome from this. It will take time. And we're talking about hardware that is affixed to people's vehicles, so, you know... And we are also touching upon the subject of resource allocation, staffing, and the ability to train and get useful enforcement out there on the streets. Everything we're talking about will take time. But if we start with two lacs of a penalty scheduled, that might not be the deterrent that we're looking for. So I think that's a discussion we should be very careful on. Another comment on that is, I think we should also strive to be, to keep this simple and keep it somewhat consistent with other violations. I don't think it serves us very well to rewrite the penalty book every time we come up with a new policy, but rather, look what other communities are doing, look what we are doing in other instances to have some degree of consistency with that. As to what lies ahead, there's been discussions about whether this should be a work session or a regular agenda item, an action item, which it is. We did respond, we staff did respond to a request to bring forth an ordinance. I think ideally, we would always start these policy discussions with a work session. That stated, the discussion has started, and you do have something in front of you to work with. And there is absolutely no urgency for council to take action on this. So I think the idea of postponing, as your legal counsel advised, with an ordinance in front of you might further the discussion rather than taking a step back and having a work session with no ordinance in front of you. So there is no urgency. You can keep postponing and keep this dialogue going and become more and more informed on the process. I very much agree, I think we all agree with the comments made, that this is important and it should be approached very carefully and methodically. I do think staff is coming to you, and thank you for the presentation, with an ordinance that is modeled after what they have seen in other communities. And I think there's wisdom in not reinventing the wheel every time we have a new policy discussion. So I think that's a good starting point. I would suggest we keep postponing it, keep the ordinance on the table, recognizing that there's no urgency to act on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. I got a couple more questions. On the issue of fines, I remember I got a parking ticket a few years ago, and I think it was like $70. So it's $250, is that pretty consistent with like a speeding violation or whatever? Or, it seems high to me for a first offense, but I just would be interested in your comments.
I believe the other ordinances that we looked at didn't have a very specific dollar amount. That's why we chose to look at our own ordinances here within the city, to kind of mayor them. Like we said though, the council has the option to choose, you know, whatever amounts you would like to see within the ordinance for any potential fines. The way that we have structured it with the party nuisance ordinance is that's all-inclusive of any additional surcharges or fees that the state kind of puts on, so that it's not 250 plus the extra percentage, that that includes those percentages too. I believe, you know, maybe the lowest fines that are really out there are about, say, well, not parking, but in terms of moving violations, you know, are around the 100 range, but then have some of those fees and percentages tacked on to them as well.
So, you know, the goal here is not to harass drivers. The goal here is to quiet down our community. So I, does the police department have the option to give warnings for maybe the first six months as opposed to, you know, taking people to the mat and wanting $250? I presume that's possible.
Absolutely. Like we do on the winter parking ordinance every year when that takes effect, we always have that window where we issue nothing but warnings to re-educate the public that this is a violation. We can do the same thing when we roll out this ordinance, whatever timeframe that you or the chief feels is appropriate, to get people educated to the new ordinance so they can take proactive measures themselves to fix their problems on their own.
As far as cost, you know, we can have a discussion, or maybe it can just be done administratively, but we might buy three meters, or we might buy 30 meters. It isn't like every policeman on the force has to have one of these. So that's something we can talk about. When this does come back, could we get staff to give us just a real quick summary of what the allowable's are that we decided a few years ago on park noise? I mean, was that, you know, 85 dB at 50 feet or, you know, for bands? That would be a question that, if you guys could dig that out, that would be very useful. So I guess my last question is, do I need to make a motion on this? Or is this discussion kind of leading to a consensus that the city manager can move forward with? If you need a motion, I can make a motion.
Yeah, I think we have a couple more comments from Vice Mayor as well as myself, and then happy to take a motion if we want to postpone it to a certain date.
Okay, I see Stacy shaking her head, yes.
And I have a suggestion on, yeah.
I have a suggested date too, so looking at the calendar.
Could it just be a motion to postpone to a date?
Yeah, I'll yield, and then when the time is appropriate, you can let me know.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible, and would it be helpful, to make an allowance, and maybe it's a, just a warning, for a vehicle that's in need of repair versus a vehicle where the owner has purposely outfitted it to be loud? Or does that just cloud the issue and make it more subjective?
Typically, in situations where you have a vehicle that's got defective exhaust, they would get a repair order, where they're given notice that you were in violation, you have a set period of time to get the vehicle repaired. And then if we have contact with the vehicle again, they would be cited for not complying with the repair order. Typically, that would be how that would be handled, because that would be a... I wouldn't cite somebody under a noise ordinance for that, because he will simply go to court and say, "Well, my muffler blew..." and say, "Well, my muffler blew out when I was two blocks away. I went to the muffler shop, got it fixed, and it was no longer a violation," which is why we have the repair order, repair order process.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up to that specific point?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, back with my '57 Chevy, remember that? I took the factory mufflers off and put glass packs on. And when I got tickets, they gave me a ticket that was a repair order as opposed to anything else, just, you know, for conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would prefer to be able to move forward with this, not as a work session. If you would like to postpone, I'm up for that, but I think going to a work session would just be going backwards here, and we need to move this forward. The one suggestion that I was going to say with this was that we right now have with the motor vehicles, it dependent on miles per hour, and I would just make the suggestion that we just make it blanket to the 88 decibels as opposed to allowing vehicles over 35 to go to the 92. Because most of these situations are happening in residential neighborhoods that they're, they shouldn't be driving more than 25 miles an hour in the first place, so that was just one suggestion. But as this will likely be postponed, gauging council, I would suggest with our very busy schedule the next couple weeks, that it may be pushed to the October 19th council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, the motion that can also be made to postpone to a time when the city, city manager feels it's appropriate to bring it back. It doesn't have to be a definite date.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'd be happy to entertain a motion here.
All right. So I hereby move that we postpone this item to a date fairly soon, but at the convenience of the city manager.
I'll second that.
How'd you like that wording, Sterling?
Just vouda bar.
I have a motion by councilmember McCarthy, seconded by councilmember Sweet. City manager, did you want to chime in here?
Just for a little direction, what would council be comfortable with in terms of seeing this come back? Are we, the mayor had mentioned October 19th, that's slightly less than a month out. Is that the timeframe you're thinking about?
Just speaking for myself, I'm comfortable with that.
Unless we have other pressing issues that for some reason is going to make that day really filled up, but that seems to be a reasonable time immense, the next few weeks of rather heavy schedules.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. As it is 4:55 right now, I think it's a good time to take a little bit of a break. Was that what you were going to say?
No, what I was going to say is, I just want to thank the legal staff, the police staff, for getting this discussion going, and the public for coming out, and for my fellow council members kind of taking my concerns seriously. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councilman McCarthy. All right, well, let us be back here, let's do 19 minutes, so at 5:15. All right, we are down to agenda item 13A, Lone Tree Overpass Project Update. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We would respectfully request a postponement of this item, and going to our legal counsel's advice earlier, maybe doing that to the city manager's convenience, I think you can expect it to come back to you fairly soon.
Thank you. Would, do we need a motion, Sterling, in this behalf, or shall we just postpone? All right, let's postpone this item. With that, we are now down to discussion item 13B, that's the public release of draft active transportation master plan. Staff, take it away.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. My name is Martin Intz. I'm the multimodal transportation planner for the city of Flagstaff, and I am here before you tonight to give you a brief presentation regarding the public release of the active transportation master plan. And I just got a couple of, of slides to go through. Main purpose of, of this presentation is to familiarize you with the contents of the plan and give you a little idea of, of what the public process will be, leading up to adoption as we move forward. Over the years, there have been a number of city plans that indicate, in a general sense, support for walking and biking, and that starts with Flagstaff's regional plan. All of tho, all those plans are fairly general in nature and, and lack some detail regarding accommodation for pedestrians and bicyclists, and the ATMP is really intended to fill in those details and to provide that guidance and, and direction. This slide gives you an idea of, of the contents of the plan, beginning with policy context, guiding principles and approach, current conditions for walking and biking. Goals and policies are high-level and aspirational. Strategies and actions are more down-to-earth and action-oriented. The outcomes and targets are what we anticipate the outcome or the results to be as we implement the plan, and then implementation is, is of course how we get there. The last two items on this list, planning considerations and design guidance, and pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, are supplemental documents. They will be rolled out or introduced, added as part B, part two and part three of the document over the next couple of weeks. The ATMP does make recommendations regarding our approach to transportation planning. This reflects what is called in the carbon neutrality plan as the big shift, and it involves a, a couple of guiding principles, to be more transformational than incremental, to emphasize pedestrians and bicycles, and don't overbuild per cars. Take a well-rounded approach to transportation, consider multiple community objectives and values, and some of those values might include sustainability, the environment, public health, and community character. And then finally, we pursue a wide range of solutions and provide multiple options for mobility. So when people think about their travel choices, not only do they have multiple options, but all of those are, are good and feasible and legitimate options. The draft plan includes a number of goals and policies. These provide high-level acknowledgement and support for walking and biking. They are, they build on the goals and policies that are already in the regional plan, but provide additional detail and specificity compared to the, to the regional plan. Strategies and actions are all the things that we can do to promote walking and biking. The list is fairly long in the draft document, and it's organized around six topics: infrastructure, maintenance, support and encouragement, safety, transportation and land use planning, and finally, evaluation. On the topic of ped and bike infrastructure, the plan will include a list of specific walking and biking projects. They are prioritized and cover sidewalks, bikeways, foot trails, enhanced street crossings, and bridges, bridges and tunnels for pets and bikes. The list creates a program for the next 20 years that uses the revenues from the transportation sales tax and from Mountain Line's first last mile grant. Those two are, are the, currently the known sources of, of revenue for walking and biking projects over the next 20 years. That list also can be incorporated directly into the city's capital improvements program, so we can go, transition rather seamlessly from plan to project to program to design to construction, and actually get some things built with the money we have available. Planning and design guidance acknowledges that, that walking and biking exists within a larger context, and addresses some of the, how some of the things we do either affect walking and biking or are, are affected by walking and biking. We've listed them in the plan at four different levels. It includes our approach to transportation planning generally, what land use and urban form look like, the design of streets and intersections, and then finally, the, the details and how we build and, and what our pedestrian and bicycle facilities look like to make sure they, they function well. A little bit on the process, this slide outlines a, a general list of the steps. We have released the, the draft document to the public. As I mentioned, we have additional information forthcoming regarding design guidance and some of the infrastructure recommendations. All this process will include a minor amendment to the regional plan, mainly that, that accomplishes, including maps that are included in the ATMP in the regional plan, and, as well as some of the text. We are going out for a 60-day public review period that will end sometime in mid-November, and following that period, there will be detailed reviews and recommendations from the city's pedestrian and bicycle committees, transportation commission, planning and zoning commission, and then finally, there's, there's formal approval by resolution by the city council. A little bit about public review during the 60-day process, outreach and engagement include a community survey. That survey is, is now available online and live. We have a handful of open houses scheduled, which you'll see in a, in a moment, a schedule for that. We are planning to make presentations to a number of commissions and stakeholder groups to, to make them aware and give them an opportunity to, to engage in the plan. For public engagement, we are really relying on a, on a model that uses groups and individuals to help us get the word out, kind of like a, like a telephone tree model. And I think it's important to note that we've already done a lot of community engagement over the last couple of years regarding walking and biking in this plan, really dating back, all the way back to 2014. So we're not starting from scratch with the public, but we really want to make sure that we heard them, that what we heard is reflected in the, in the plan, and that, and we got some of the recommendations and, and details right. I mentioned there are a series of open houses. These are five that will be conducted over the next couple of weeks. All of these will be online or virtual, with the exception of the October 16th open house at Bushmaster Park. And this is, don't worry about these, writing down these dates, the, the list is included on the ATMP website, which I'll give you in, in just a moment. I did mention that the community survey is, is live. Again, don't worry about this website, there's a link to it on the ATMP website. Council can play a role in this. This, this slide outlines some of what our expectations for you. First and foremost, we'd like your help in getting the word out, so any of your contacts or groups, or acquaintances, or, or whatever, online and otherwise, to make aware that the, both of the plan is out, and that there's a survey to fill out to provide feedback would be much appreciated. We are planning to have a detailed work session at the conclusion of the public review period. This gives council kind of a chance to see what the public said, kind of review what the public engagement produced, as well as get into the details of, of the plan and, and have an opportunity to ask questions, work through some of those details. Think of, of that probably in the, somewhat after November, so either late, late December, if we can find a way around the holidays, or, or probably more likely, early January for that work session. And then the final step is approval by city council by resolution, and that will probably occur according to the schedule in, in early March. So I mentioned that website, it, it is simply the city's website, followed by forward slash and ATMP, and that, that concludes this brief overview, but I'm available and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council? I knew he was going to want to talk.
Yeah, yeah. Wow, Martin, thank you for the presentation, and what a important day that today is. I, I've been looking forward to this day for a long time, and I'm just so grateful we're, we're here. So thank you to your work on this, and I know we're just beginning, but I wanted to thank Rick Barrett and Jeff Baumann and the team that has been working on this, along with members from sustainability that are helping out with the public outreach, and, and to council and leadership. This has been a long time coming, and I'm just so excited that this is moving forward into the public 60-day review. Martin, just a couple comments. If it's possible to create like a one-page graphic that speaks to all the different public engagement opportunities and avenues of engagement, and links, QR codes, you name it, a bunch of bicycles on it, that'd be really helpful, I think, for social media and for us to pass around. And then, when you do reach out to the commissions, I, I was curious if the disability awareness commission was on your list?
Council member, they, they most definitely are. I typically attend their, their monthly meetings, so we would, we would definitely make a presentation to them.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that. And then, lastly, you, I just wanted to circle back to the, I think, the bikeways portion of the ATMP. You said that that will be live as almost like a phase two in a couple of weeks, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm just trying to think in my own head how to stagger and respond to comments, but I'm almost thinking that, yeah. Okay, thank you. That's great. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison?
Thank you. Martin, this is great and really exciting. I'm, I, I, I don't remember you mentioning the sustainability commission, maybe you said that and I missed it. I think it would be very important to include them in the, the process you mentioned. And then I just, I would like to sit here in tension for a few minutes and discuss this through the lens of John Wesley Powell Boulevard. We have Prop 419 money that has to be spent in certain ways. We have a lot of discretion as a deliberative body on, on how we, on how we support that, or how we get in the way of it. If John Wesley Powell's going to be extended and/or built out, or not, how do we, how is, how is some of that money going to be saved to invest in these other critical infrastructure objectives? And what is the role of the public's voice in helping to prioritize a reimagining of, of that road and its role in the community? Those are, those are questions for you, Martin. Just, just to riff off of, just to think out loud about. Rick, I, I have the same questions for you as well. I'd love to hear your thoughts on this, too.
Mayor, good evening, members of council. I'm Rick Barrett, city engineer. So I'll try to rephrase the question. I think, I think it was, you don't want to build John Wesley Powell and repurpose that funding, or did I get that wrong?
That's, that's not, well, what I want is irrelevant. The, this body of seven people up here is going to come up with a, a, a compromise solution to a lot of these issues. I just want to play with the tension that's there with Prop 419 and how we have to spend that money, and this new active transfer, transportation, the amendments that are coming. And so, yeah, can you just think out loud with me for a little bit, and let's, let's work through some of the, some of the intricacies of that?
So what I know about John Wesley Powell is that it's a roadway that's going to connect Pine Canyon to Butler Fourth Intersection, which right now is the road, well, the fourth leg of that intersection goes out to the Humane Society. Just to help people understand what we're talking about, it's going through Greenfield, but there's a state residential that's been growing out that way. We're working right now through a planning process. We're about to be able to conclude the engineering component of that, where we're, you know, putting pencil to paper and we're figuring out physical design alignments. We've recently identified an alternative alignment that can avoid some of the residential properties that I just referenced. So we're going to be pursuing that as an alternate, and, and again, looking at the horizontal geometry, the vertical geometry, cost estimates. So when we have all that information, you know, the data, if you will, we're then going to hand the ball over to the community development team, and Sarah is going to, Sarah Dector, that is, is going to process a, a regional plan amendment, which is going to be a whole nother... which is gonna be a whole nother process in and of itself. So council is gonna have many touches on this as we go into the future. There's gonna be a lot of public involvement, as you've seen with the ATMP. But yeah, that's about what I can add at this point in time. So we have a, yeah, again, a big process that's just at its, I don't know that it's at its beginning. We've been working quite a while establishing the data I just mentioned. But yeah, we're we're getting, getting to the point that we can get this regional plan amendment. And then when we have that regional plan in place, it's gonna add specificity to this alignment that is currently in the regional plan, actually. So that's why we call this a specific plan, so it's gonna add all this detail, the cost estimates, the horizontal, vertical alignment. And then ultimately, I think, you know, what preferred alternate is selected, so we can narrow down those options. But then, once we're there, so now I'm gonna back into the language for 419. The language for 419 was very clear that that roadway was only gonna be funded by the 60, by the City of Flagstaff at a level of 40%. So we only have 40% of the funding, and that's in $2018 that we need to build this road as we stand here today. So the idea was that we were gonna build a partnership with all the property owners in that area and create some form of a district that would allow the 100% funding to come to fruition and allow us to advance the work. And then, of course, you know, I I think where you were going, and I probably shouldn't speculate, council member, but, you know, I mean, we've got transit corridors, we've got bike and pet opportunities, not to mention the connectivity necessary for the development to occur in that Greenfield space. Did I?
No, thank you. You know, and there, I I will, it's, I'm never one to hesitate to point out the elephant in the room. I think there's going to be a lot of conversations in this community about whether we should move forward with John Wesley Powell Boulevard at all. And I think that's gonna be an interesting conversation. And this is just a perfect opportunity to sort of mention that there's, there's a lot of voices out there ready to put a shot across the bow. And I think as we're thinking about the AT MP, we're, we're, we're not just thinking theoretically about a lot of this stuff. There's gonna be some very real concrete, pun intended, decisions that that come into play for very specific, real areas around town.
Councilmember Rassell?
Just a really quick follow-up on that comment. Thank you, Councilmember Rassell. And I think what I took away from your comments, and hopefully I understood as well. But I, you know, what I heard is like, how does the ATMP values integrate into our projects? It's kind of what I took away from your comments, and we're wrestling with that. Where the, where the rubber hits the road is is challenging in terms of implementation. We have a lot of competing values, and it's difficult to please all, and there's a lot of complications. So I just wanna say that I've witnessed staff and leadership wrestle with these things and and move the needle, even proactively before adoption of the ATMP. And so I think I look forward to the continued conversation on this topic, and I think we're gonna be continuing to wrestle with topics, as you mentioned, Rick, in terms of like JW Powell and and so many others, Lone Tree. But, um, yeah, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Rassell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for for the question, councilmember Aslan, and an astute reply from our city engineer, Mr. Barrett. I just wanna give space to recognize that JW Powell is actually stipulated in the Regional Transportation Plan Blueprint 2040, which was developed by multiple partners in the community, mainly the county, the city, ADOT, and many partners. And as we speak, Metroplan is in the process of also reviewing that transportation plan, which will be in the next 20 years. Also note, not so long ago, council approved a letter request, which was also echoed by Metroplan, where we requested through Congressman O'Halloran and our senators, Sinema and Kellys, to include JW Powell funding in the proposed infrastructure bill, which is already signed into law. Is it, or is it, it's still being in the, close to signing, signing to law? So I think the question at hand would be, how can we synergize the Active Transportation Master Plan and elevate it in such a level that the the vision and purpose and goals of the Active Transportation Master Plan of the city can be elevated into advocacy at the Metroplan level, at the regional, at the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council level, and also through our partners, ADOT, which also I will recognize later because of the Fourth Street Bridge Project and promoting bike and pedestrian safety. So I think we just have to kind of expand the discussion in in putting forth the ATMP goals into our regional transportation planning and our advocacy statewide, ADOT, and federal dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Rassell. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Enson, the whole team for all your hard work on this. This is really exciting. With that, we are down to Agenda Item. Hold. 13C, Discussion of Letter Regarding For-Fry RFP Cancellation. Ms. Langley?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. Also on the line tonight, we have Neil Chapman, Wildland Forest Health Supervisor. So last Tuesday, September 14th, the U.S. Forest Service announced that it would be canceling, or that it, they had decided to cancel the Four Forest Restoration Initiative Phase Two Request for Proposals, or RFP. The Forest Service noted in their press release that the RFP requirements were not aligned with industry standards, and also that the project involves significant financial and investment risk that remained unresolved at this time. So that was kind of the reasoning that they gave. After we learned about that cancellation, we received a request from a council member to draft a letter to send to the Forest Service, highlighting the city's commitment to forest restoration and also our desire to see such projects advance and continue. So a draft of that letter is included in your agenda packet, and with the council's approval, we will go ahead and submit that letter to the Forest Service. So I know Neil's on the line to take any questions, as well as myself. Thank you.
Ms. Langley, any questions or any edits to the letter provided that you'd be interested in? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, good draft. I do have one suggested edit. First paragraph, last line, replace the word wildfire with wildfire and subsequent flooding. Because it's not just the wildfires themselves, it's the flooding that occurs after the wildfires that is causing, as we already know, a lot of damage.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, we can definitely make that edit before sending the letter.
Thank you. Other than that, I'm supportive of the letter.
Thank you. Good suggestion, Councilmember McCarthy. Anyone else? Councilmember Rassell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Langley and Mr. Clifton, for putting this on the agenda. I I strongly support this letter as a, as a council member and also as a member of the Executive Board of the Economic Collaborative of Northern Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have enough head nods to proceed with this letter, so. All right, lots of thumbs up, too. Doubles. Yeah, right on. All right, well, then that brings, uh, thank you, Ms. Langley. That brings us to Agenda Item 14, our Future Agenda Item Request. 14A is a Future Agenda Item Request, a citizen's petition seeking to designate that Woody Way traffic is a one-way street westbound only, allowing for emergency vehicle access. And do we have the petitioner? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brian Hall. Okay. My name is Brian Hall. I'm a lifelong resident of Flagstaff, and I currently live at the intersection of Axe Handle and Highland Mesa. My citizen's petition is to close Woody Way to westbound traffic, making it a one-way street. I feel that this is the least intrusive and least expensive way to mediate this situation. As I stated in a previous petition to the council, my front yard has been driven into twice within 14 days. The stop sign was knocked over in front of my house twice within 25 days by out-of-control drivers. Both of these incidents happened in March of 2021, and all of those drivers were coming from or going to Presidio in the Pines via the new Woody Way that has been opened. Axe Handle and Woody Way were designed by traffic engineers to be 26 feet wide as a traffic calming feature. With the road being only 25 and a half feet wide, it makes it very dangerous for speeding cars to navigate the 90-degree turn, as proven by the bus stop curd, downstop sign, and four cars leaving the road surface in less than three months. The intersection at Highland Mesa and Axe Handle is not wide enough to handle the increased volume and traffic that the opening of Woody Way has created. This traffic study done in May of 2021 showed an 880% increase in traffic in front of my home, going from 93 cars a day to 818 cars a day. Currently, we're funneling 1,000 vehicles a day from 242-foot-wide streets down to a 25 and a half-foot-wide street. Multiple Presidio residents have proven they cannot navigate the width of the roads that are currently there, creating a hazard to public safety. Presidio residents will argue this cut through traffic saves time, but if they're obeying traffic laws and stopping at the stop sign, it's not a shortcut at all. My five and eight-year-old have to walk across the street to get to their bus stop every day, and so as a parent, it's terrifying to live there. Presidio residents also argue that it's a necessary emergency exit. They have two exits from our neighborhood. We've had two exits from our neighborhood. University Heights has two exits from their neighborhood. This is a third exit from their neighborhood. What I ask the council to think about when considering this as a future agenda item is how many times would it be? I mean, how many times is acceptable for a car to drive into your front yard where your children play? Where tons of our community children play, and I really just think shutting it down to a would, a one-way would decrease that traffic and increase safety in our neighborhood. Thank you, guys, for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rassell. And I do understand the city staff has a short presentation on this as well, and we will take that, and then I will have the other speaker cards and let the other public participants after that.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Stephanie Santana. I'm a Transportation Engineering Project Manager here at the city. I have a quick presentation to explain what city staff and the Transportation Commission have been working on with regards to the Woody Way citizen petition that we have received. I will discuss the role the Transportation Commission has had with Woody Way and University Avenue Traffic Calming. Then I'll go over some background and history of Woody, Woody Way. We will briefly go over previous traffic counts that the city has collected in the area, discuss the current pilot projects that are in place on University Avenue. And finally, we will talk about the upcoming discussions that we will have at the next Transportation Commission meeting in October. Here's a map of the west side of town to orient you with the different neighborhoods that I'll be mentioning and where Woody Way is in conjunction. Boulder Point is the neighborhood here to the east. Presidio is a neighborhood here to the west. And Woody Way is a connector road here in between the two neighborhoods. The city has an adopted method for determining if a residential neighborhood meets minimum requirements for consideration of traffic calming measures due to high speeds or volumes. The city, with the Transportation Commission's concurrence, will move forward with the methods defined in the City of Flagstaff's Guidebook for Residential Traffic Management to determine if traffic calming is needed and what measures are applicable, applicable for a given site. When Boulder Point was designed and constructed, there was a small road, road called Woody Way, built off the eastern end of the development for future access to the adjacent property, now known as Presidio in the Pines. The original Presidio traffic impact analysis projected that plus or minus 580 trips would utilize Woody Way. This does not include additional Boulder Point trips to or from the west that would be expected on top of the 580 trips. We have previously gone over this with, in detail with council and Transportation Commission, but to summarize, a gate was placed across Woody Way to prevent Presidio's heavy construction traffic from going through the Boulder Point neighborhood. The city agreed to leave the gate in place until 90% of the homes in Presidio had been occupied. As of October 2019, Presidio was roughly 95% out, built out, and in April 2020, the gate was removed by the city. We agree that it would be easy and and great to close this roadway, but the regional plan, zoning code, and the engineering standards are all documents that encourage connectivity between neighborhoods. It allows for shorter trips, along with pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. Transportation Engineering committed to performing before and after traffic volume and speed studies to determine if there were any adverse impacts that warrant traffic calming as a result of the gate removal. Traffic counts before the gate was removed were conducted in fall of 2019. The city then planned on conducting after-the-gate-was-removed counts in fall of 2020, right after COVID started. It was decided that we needed to wait until schools, FUSD and NAU, were back to in-person classes to take the after counts, because of course, the data would have been significantly less and not accurately comparable to the the forecounts. Transportation Commission, with the City of Flagstaff's guidance, decided to treat the University Avenue speeding concern separate from the Woody Way gate concern, so we can move forward with a pilot project, temporary, a pilot project of temporary traffic calming measures along University. The University Pilot Project is progressing nicely, and I have some images in the upcoming slides. First, I wanted to show you some of the data that we have collected over time. This includes seven locations in Boulder Point, two locations in Presidio, and then most recently, we've added the Woody Way. We've had extensive conversations and gone into great detail of this data with the Transportation Commission and both HOAs, and will continue to do so as more data is collected. Jumping to some of the pilot projects we have in place today, here is the western end of our pilot project. To orient you here in the right corner is a map. University Avenue is here. This is Tombaugh, here, and this is Majestic, here. We decided that putting a traffic calming device right at the entrance to the residential part of University is a good way to separate the commercial area from the residential area. We have used these candlesticks as a temporary measure, so we can study how well a center island median and a bump out reduces speeds in this location. Here's an image of the device at ground level. Moving on, here's the eastern end of our pilot project. We also placed a center island median using candlestick just to the west of Majestic, shown here with a star. And once again, here is an image of the device at ground level. The third traffic calming measure we wanted to try was to place radar feedback signs along University. Transportation Commission agreed that we should place one sign at each of the straightaways. Here's what the westbound signs look like and the other temporary traffic calming measures in the background. The next steps for the study is to collect traffic counts to see if the temporary traffic calming measures have slowed speeds. We have two ways of collecting data, one of them through the new radar feedback signs, and the other is our typical way of laying out the roadway tubes. Since I've completed this PowerPoint a few weeks back, we've already collected the data from University and Woody Way. I literally picked up the counters just yesterday. Once I have the time to process and analyze the data, I'll be looking for any changes in speeds or volumes, hoping, of course, that the speeds go down. The next Transportation Commission meeting is scheduled for October 6th, and we plan to discuss the new data that was just collected and determine the next steps forward. If the speeds do decrease, we will be working with the Transportation Commission and the HOAs to either make adjustments to the pilot project or make the changes permanent. The Woody Way Gate and University Avenue Traffic Calming projects are ongoing with the Transportation Commission, and this is just a short summary of what we have completed so far. Jeff Baumann, the traffic engineer, and I will be available during any point of this fair item to
I'd like to take the speakers now, the public participants, starting with Melody Bowling, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am a 50-year resident of Flagstaff. I've watched it grow for a lot of years, and as much as I enjoy a lot of the things that have come, some of the things that have happened, as far as our roads, our streets and our safety, as far as our roads go, is a concern to me. I don't live in Boulder Point, but my daughter and her family, which includes my two dear grandchildren, do. And so I've driven those neighborhoods' streets for a lot of years. As such, in the past year, I have experienced firsthand the effect of increased amounts of traffic from the Presidio that have come through this neighborhood with the opening of the Woody Way. Boulder Point's streets are narrow. When cars choose to park across from each other, there's only room for one-way traffic at that point, and I have spoken to people who are parking large vehicles on the roads specifically to slow down traffic, and that is also dangerous, but it works. And that's another concern that I have. With increased traffic, I've had to stop abruptly numerous times when aggressive speeding drivers who don't feel the need to share the road come through that one-way without looking to see if someone is coming. I've had to actually back up to let them through. These situations are definitely increasing with the opening of Woody Way. Surely, the streets of Boulder Point were not designed to support this amount of increased traffic. I personally witnessed a car after car coming up Highland Mesa Drive, ignoring the stop sign at Axe Handle Way, as they turned left toward Woody Way into the Presidio, and if anyone is watching them, they manifest their belligerence toward the traffic sign and the people who live around it through unacceptable hand gestures and profanity, many times with neighborhood children being exposed to such unacceptable behavior. It seems that they're making a statement that ends with, "And there's nothing you can do about it." For the safety of all Boulder residents and especially their children, I'm hoping that the council can do something about it. Therefore, I'm supporting this current petition to make Woody Way a one-way street to at least reduce traffic from the Presidio by half through the Boulder Point neighborhood. Please don't wait to take action until someone is hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. Garrett Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council for the opportunity to speak on this. We've had a lot of discussion tonight about quality of life, and it is right here in the mission statement to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. The opening of this road has had a huge impact on my quality of life. I'm trying to work through the processes. I'm trying to get to the point where we have the traffic studies completed and that everything matters, and it can fall into place, and you can understand how much this is impacting people, but there's a lot more than just the number of cars. We've talked about the noise ordinances. The noise that comes from this is unbelievable, because people are under acceleration coming through this neighborhood. People are in a very big hurry, and this has impacted our ability to have our community, to form our bonds with our neighbors. When people come through there, they say, "Wow, I really feel sorry for you. I really feel bad for you. This must be awful." And I can assure you, it is awful. There's not a lot to do about it. The police department has done a good job of being responsive to us. I really appreciate the work that these men and women are doing. We understand that this is a low priority in terms of the hierarchy of what's going on with public safety, but it is public safety. When these people come out, they do come out at 10 o'clock and stay for a couple hours until they get something more pressing that they need to do, and they do pull people over, but that's a drop in the bucket, because people come through here with quite an attitude, and you can see these in their comments online, just responding to our exercising our rights to bring this to you as a petition. One Presidio resident on the Nextdoor app says, "Oh, this is a short stretch," talking about Woody Way, "people will still sneak west," smiley emoji. Or Thomas Steed said on there in an open forum, "People will still go east. Who would patrol this?" And this is what we're dealing with, is that people with willful disregard for the law think that they're entitled to come through our neighborhood like it's not a neighborhood. I was out there trying to help the police department to do these things with taking pictures of license plates, so I can get that information and pass it along to the law enforcement so that they can take action on these drivers that are frequent. And when I was out there taking a picture of the license plate, a guy came out, he rolls down his window, he flipped him off in front of my kids and said, "I will run this effing stop sign every day, and there's nothing you can effing do about it." I called the police, and I did get his description, and they did contact him. He drove by at 2:00 in the morning. I witnessed him coming through with blazing his horn, just to disrupt our lives even more. The police said, "Did you see who was driving the car?" It's nighttime. It's tent. I can't do that. These things don't have solutions, so maybe he's right. Maybe there is nothing I can do about that, but there is something that you can do about that. That's what we're asking for, is some regard for our quality of life and our safety, which is your mission. And I understand that my time has expired. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. If you would like to finish your speech, I'd be happy to let you proceed.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, is there a...
Would you like to proceed with...
There has to be a question. I think Councilmember Solis has an actual question.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Solis.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Hall, right?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, and the lady, the previous speaker, I didn't write down your name, but thank you all for being here. And I understand, and I've been in neighborhoods, and I actually live in Boulder Point for three years, so I'm familiar with the traffic there, but that was between 2006 and 2008. So I would like to hear from you on steps forward, focusing on the pilot projects that staff has engaged so far, and what are your thoughts on the pilot project, and what are the recommendations you can provide to staff and council at this point?
Thank you very much. That's a great question. The Traffic Commission, when we had the Traffic Commission meeting the last time that I was present for, they said that they wanted to separate those two issues, the speed on University and the Woody Way traffic increase. So they did come up with this plan. We were talking about this plan in 2007. I was the president of the HOA Board for Boulder Point. We were talking about the speed on University back then, and they were talking about these medians. They did finally go in. What they didn't mention in the presentation is that those pictures show you where the candlestick medians are. They moved those about a foot in, because they kept getting run over. What they don't tell you is that one of the neighbors reported that the traffic engineers were out removing, putting those barriers back up, and somebody came through and laid on the horn while the workers were in the road. That's the kind of impact that I'm talking about with the disrespect and the drivers that are in a hurry. I think a lot of them are commuting through to get to Gore. I think that there's a lot of people cutting through. Also, the city staff's presentation said that they're separate neighborhoods. In an email back to us, they said that they're the same neighborhoods. They don't count that as cut-through traffic, which clearly is because they're different densities of zonings and different amount of residences. The impact of those, the speed awareness signs, those are good if you care, but I think that people have an idea recently that, "Ah, I could go 5 miles an hour over the speed limit, and nobody's going to pull me over for that." And so I think that that stuff happens. The traffic calming measures are nowhere near where this intersection is, and one of the problems is this 90-degree turn where still 850 people come through each day. We're at the end of that, and I used to think, "Oh, man, is this guy going to stop at the stop sign?" Currently, I look at them, I say, "They're definitely not stopping at the stop sign. In fact, I'm wondering if they're going to turn." And that comes straight. It's pointed straight at my house, where my kids play, and I've tried to get into the backyard, and I've tried to not get into the front yard, but I still have to water my plants. I still have to pick up my pine needles, and when I'm out there, it causes constant stress. When I get home from a long shift work, and people tailgate me the whole way down the Highland Mesa for doing the speed limit, and then I try to get into my driveway, and they run the stop sign, and they try to pass me while I'm trying to maneuver, it is a very stressful thing, because there are a lot of kids, there are a lot of dog walkers, there are a lot of people on bicycles, and so there's all these different directions of things, and these people are just in such a hurry. So I think that the traffic calming measures, I thank the Traffic Commission for approving those further down, but like they said, this is a separate issue. I don't see how a 90-degree turn can be improved upon by candlestick delineators and things like that. So talking to the police chief, I was thanking him for what they're able to do with enforcement on that, and he said, you know, "It's a good idea to also come up with a more engineering control solution rather than an enforcement solution, something that's a lot more permanent." And that's what we're trying to do, is provide ways to get this moved ahead, and like a one-way street would not impact the ability of emergency vehicles to move within that. The emergency gate was, I don't think, a big deterrent to emergency vehicles. They had a Knox box key on there. They could still open it up for emergencies and evacuations, and that's a free solution to this. I think that we're going to put a lot of money into infrastructure, going through the packet of information there, but I also think that we should also examine how the streets are very narrow, and there's a lot of traffic through those narrow streets. We are not in a position where we can leave that because of housing values in Flagstaff. Of course, our house has gone up too, but the commissions to move from there would put us in a financial hole. We can't leave. So we're coming here to put this in front of you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just make a comment to our speaker, please continue working with our staff as we address this issue moving forward, and I invite you also to attend future meetings with the Transportation Commission and please work with us. We have to find a meaningful and impactful solution to this issue.
Thank you. If I may, what we were worried about is that the April 15, 2021, Jeff Baumann said that there was a 10% increase in traffic, and when we got the data from city staff, it was much higher than that. So I just wanted to let you guys know that there's a discrepancy maybe of, a silo of information, that this is a big impactful problem. When we came to you guys the last time, we didn't have that data, so that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Councilmember Shumoni?
I actually don't have a question for the speaker, but I'll come back. Maybe come back to me if there's any other questions for the speaker. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for... Okay, well, then we'll... Thank you, Mr. Hall. We'll turn this into our discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a virtual public comment as well.
We do have a virtual public comment? Okay, I'd like to take that now.
We have Karen Woods on the line. You can go ahead and unmute and turn on your camera if you'd like. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Corinne Woods. Am I... Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I live on the corner of Highland Mesa and Majestic. I'd like to say that I've been there for 20-plus years. My husband and I built our home there 20 years ago, and I will say the traffic has never been more horrendous. Not only do we have several cars parked on the street, which only allow one car...
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit. I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you on our end here. Could you get closer to your microphone and see if that might help, Ms. Woods? Can we see about reconnecting the individual?
Yes, Mayor, we'll go ahead and try to get her connected.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, yeah. Let's see if we can...
I'm sorry.
Disconnect and reconnect and see if we can hear you better. We can hear you.
Okay. Do you want me to start over?
Yes, if you could start over, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. So my name is Corinne Woods. I live on the corner of Highland Mesa and Majestic. I've been there for over 20 years, and I would like to say that the traffic has never been more horrendous. Not only do we have several cars parked on the street, which only allow one car to pass at a time. The speed of...
Ms. Woods, I'm sorry, we're having no trouble hearing you. We heard the first part of your first 30 seconds, but...
Is not taken. We are...
Yeah, if we could have you definitely email us to council, then we can, we could even, yeah, read this while we're in discussion, because we're having troubles with the connection. Did we send that in the chat? I saw that, okay. It said council@flagstaffaz.gov, and it will send to all members of council. All right, that was the only public participant we have electronically?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm opening this up to council, Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank the members of the public who brought this forward and expressed vulnerability and honesty and humility in your comments. I feel for you all, and this is a tough situation. I think we're facing this issue in a number of locations right now around the community, places like La Plaza Vieja for many years, and it's a tough one, because we're growing, and people like to drive their cars, and at times, we might overbuild for cars, but I'm proud to say we have thin roads here, right, Rick? And that's something I personally advocate for, because it forces that type of speed mitigation like you talked about, which is design-oriented, which I don't know if it's the only way to address this, but it's one way that I hear works. You know, so you build it worldwide, people speed, and neighbors complain. You build it thin, it creates other obstacles, but it hopefully helps us slow folks down. But I appreciate the traffic calming mitigations that we're doing, that were presented upon by staff. I wonder what else could be done in a holistic manner to look at traffic calming, not just for a problem location.
You're done.
I'm out of time.
No more talking.
And those are my comments.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. I get it. I get it. Okay. I'll speed it up and wrap it up. So I know things take a while. It sounds like it's going through the commissions, and they're wrestling with it. They're the experts, not me. Those commissions know how to handle these types of situations and help us wrestle with these things. I am curious to see how the commissions handle it. I appreciate the community bringing it to us proactively, but I feel like we need to let it run its course through the city commissions first and see what they come up with, and then we can revisit it as a council. I might be in the minority on this. I just don't know how you all feel, but I think that the commission should get the chance to wrestle with it and explore mitigations to the best of their abilities. Rick, and to the commissions, options that don't negatively impact bike and ped would be a priority to me. I know it can be difficult to, you know, meet all the needs of our transportation community, but ideally, you know, message to the commissions would be, what are options that don't take away from the bike lane, even if there technically isn't a bike lane there? But anyways, I just wanted to mention, you know, the design versus enforcement, as was mentioned a couple of times, it's very difficult to enforce these types of things, but if we can design better for it, I think all we can do is attempt to mitigate. That's all. Thank you. And so those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember Shimoney. Other councilmember, Aslan?
Okay, well, you know, I'm on your side on this. I'm ready to shut the gate. I'm ready for that not to be a method of travel for vehicles anymore. The problem here is that it's very clear to me that University and Boulder Point in general is being treated like a through street for another very busy, crowded neighborhood. And it was never designed to be a through street, and it shouldn't be operated as one. You know, and I don't like to micromanage these things. I am not a traffic expert. I am not a city streets engineer. And we have a lot of good people who think about this full-time, and they can consider a lot of different things that I'll never even think about. And I'm also very proud of our, the commissions that we have here in Flagstaff. And I find the process of involving those commissions to be sacrosanct. It's an important part of our process in open, transparent city government. But I've been through there a number of times. I spent a few hours right on that corner after the last conversation we had about Woody Way. And there was an officer there, I can't remember his name right now, but we had a nice, long conversation as well while he was monitoring the traffic. I can, you know, I can just start to put myself in your shoes and to appreciate what a nightmare you guys are experiencing. And I'm, I just can't imagine having to deal with that myself on my street when it wasn't an issue before. And I think the clearest, the clearest, I think what we should do is shut down that road. And then we could have a longer conversation about how do we move forward on this. There are other ways for Presidio traffic to get into town, other appropriate ways. And so I don't know what that means, but I'm on your side on this, and I will do everything we can to make that problem go away. And I think the only, right now, the clearest singular way to make that problem go away is to shut the gate.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm sorry for the way some people have behaved, and I'm sorry for the stress that this has brought to you and all of your neighbors. We all should be able to enjoy where we live and feel safe where we live. So I just want to express that to you. I, too, don't know what the solution is. I mean, maybe a short-term solution is shutting it and then reopening it later. I don't, I don't know. I would like the Traffic Commission, I mean, the Transportation Commission and staff to really decide that. And I think what we have here, too, is an even bigger problem that we see all around town, and that's angry drivers driving too fast, being too aggressive, not thinking of possible consequences of the way they drive. And I don't know what we do about that other than continue to have these discussions in council about people need to slow down and people need to respect neighborhoods and behave as they would like people to behave in their own neighborhoods. So there's that. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking and to the online speakers and for all of the emails. I do drive through Boulder Point quite often, and I went to Presidio yesterday after thinking long and hard that I needed to go take another look. I have been out there before and been to Woody Way. And I see the traffic increasing. I go to Boulder Point every other week, and I have been for years, and I have seen the traffic increase, so there's no doubt on that. I am curious to see if the traffic calming measures have helped. I would like to know the results, and I don't think we have that in yet. This is going to be an important discussion because it's, I think it's more involved than just your corner. I think this is that whole area. And again, I just appreciate you bringing this up and bringing this to us. And I look forward to seeing the results on the mitigation efforts that we are having so far. And people do need to slow down, so I think this is a good reminder for all of us. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you, councilmember Sweet. Councilmember McCarthy?
A couple of comments. I take the numbers of the amount of traffic on University, from what I understand from the analyzing the report when I read it yesterday, was on University in the area of the candlesticks. When we opened up Woody Way, that traffic went up about, only about 10%. Now, over on Axandale, where you folks live, or some of you, I'm sure that traffic has gone up way more than 10%. So I can appreciate how you're concerned about that. But I guess the main point I'm trying to make is, all the data may be good, it's just that it's taken in different places. 10% at University and way higher than that at Axandale. I just happen to live one house away from Highland Mesa, as I think you know. And I, my neighbor who lives right on Highland Mesa has been complaining to me about noise of, you know, motorcycles and hot cars going through there, and that, so that is a real issue. The other thing I want to point out is that I was at a council meeting when they were considering the planning and zoning and, you know, the development agreement and all, everything about Presidio. So this is before Presidio was built. And council had a discussion about should this road be opened or closed? And at that point in time, which is what, probably 10 years ago, council made a decision that it would stay closed, and I won't bother with all the details, but during construction, and that when the construction was essentially done, that the road would be opened. So in effect, that was a promise to the people in the Presidio that that road would be open, and that was something that they took into account when they bought houses over there. So I'm not really taking sides on this issue. I'm just trying to give the council all of the background that I am personally aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Jumping in here, just say that I feel for you. I, I mean, I was raising my young kids, my baby born in our home on a street that people drive 45 miles an hour on and a 25, where I was never let my kids out front and was scared to be snow shoveling while they're two years old playing on the snow piles with me walking into the road to slow people down and then doing same hand gestures as you all are experiencing in the same words. And that's, that is stressful, and it's bothersome. But the difference is, is that in my case, I knew that was going to be happening on that street. And I definitely can understand how this is such fraught for you all and raising your family and living in a safe home. I will probably be echoing a lot of what other members of council said, which is that something absolutely needs to be done about this, that we, that this needs to also go through commissions, individuals who know far better than I do or we do as a council body, to see what are all the options that we can pursue. The future agenda item request process is pretty strict, so if we did move this forward today, the only option we could consider for that road would be turning it one way. And that's what my concern would be by pushing this forward. And I am open to any of the options, whether it's even closing that road. But as the fair petition states, that wouldn't actually be worth, we wouldn't be able to consider that at a future discussion if we went through with the petition as worded. So I guess that's where I stand, unless other members of council would like to speak up to saying, let's pursue this forward. It does seem that we are on a similar page for this, but I won't speak on your behalf.
Quick question. Thank you, Mayor. I guess a question for staff. After the commission were to see this and wrestle this further, does that come back to council at all in form of an update, maybe even part of a email update, part of the city manager report? I'm just curious what, how this looks moving forward, if this fair gets voted down.
Your honor, members of council, Rick Barrett, city engineer. It certainly can. If that's what you would like, we'll make it happen.
I would personally be open to that, along with other traffic mitigation, what's the word, pilots that we're exploring, maybe it could be part of a pilot conversation regarding traffic calming mitigation, and this could be part of that. And then is there a timeline at all that we can think about in terms of how that looks?
Well, we're moving. As traffic, excuse me, I do it too, transportation staff, as they indicated, they just picked up their counts today. And it's critical for us that when we perform counts, that we have schools in place, including NAU, FUSD, all the above. So that's been done. We just picked up the hoses today, so we're going to be crunching data with the intent to getting in front of the Transportation Commission first Wednesday, October, I think they said the 6th. So that's our, that's our schedule right now. So depending on the outcome of the Transportation Commission, we should be able to get it to council, you know, as soon as the city manager can get it on agenda for us.
Great, thank you for that, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing how those commission meetings go. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All right, with that, we will be moving on unless otherwise noted by councilmembers that they would proceed with this fair. And I'm not hearing it right now. So thank you all. We're going to continue to work hard. I know that's not the answer you may want, because I want this solved myself right away if I was in your shoes. But we'll definitely keep our finger on the pulse, move it as fast as we can through the right processes, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we close the item, I just, I just want to make sure that there's, that it's understood that I would like to see the closure of that road as one of the alternative solutions to this. And just to make sure that's back on the table as something that we're discussing. I know I wasn't in favor of that the last time this topic came up, but enough is enough, and I've seen enough to know that that should be a viable option for us to choose from.
Mr. Mayor, council, we've taken really good notes during this, and we'll let it play its course through the commission, and you can expect to see it again, and we'll talk about those options.
Excellent, thank you. All right, that brings us down to our agenda item 15, which is our city council request for future agenda items. And I'll just note that this is specifically the fairs, this isn't an additional to-from. So do we have, so rather than going down the list of everyone, does anyone have any fairs for today? All right, city manager?
I do not have a fair. That's a safe assumption moving forward as well. I just wanted to interject here. We took some liberties here, and I, we're once again looking for your feedback. We bifurcated what used to be one section, one agenda item, which was informational to and from and request for future agenda items. So we put the informational stuff up front. Council indicated they wanted to have an opportunity to have this dialogue twice. We kept that up front in the agenda and then moved the fair portion of this to the end of the agenda, giving you an opportunity. But that's, that's the idea here, and we'd be looking for your feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, and thank you for that, city manager. My feedback to council, and I'm curious what you all think, is, you know, I thought the spirit of what you were bringing up earlier, councilman McCarthy, which I agreed with full-heartedly, is sometimes at the end of a council meeting, I like to have a closing word, a comment to the public, a comment to my colleagues, whatever that might look like. And I'd like for us to have that ability to, just to be able to have that debrief moment at the end of a meeting. So I guess that's my comment, city manager. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I also think, as I said before, and as Mr. Shimoney just said, that just a few minutes to go around once, and if there's something that, you know, the discussion during a meeting triggers your thought that you may want to bring that out and discuss it with the council. And I realize we can't discuss it, but we can, you know, just bring it up real briefly. I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I'll give you a good example of that. A moment ago, I forgot to do this, but I wanted to wish councilmember Solis a happy birthday tomorrow. And she's smiling for a very particular reason.
Councilperson Aslan?
Can I start the to and from now, Mr. Mayor? I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to circle back also at the end of the meeting to, because I actually saved two items that I was going to say at this point, because I was anticipating a to and fro, to and from informational item, which is greeting councilmember Aslan a happy birthday tomorrow as well. We have the same birthday. Also, and if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I want to also take a moment to, first, I want to lift up, and if I could extend a virtual hug to every member of Team Flagstaff, I would do that, and I could hug you in person, I would. So I would want to lift up every member of our Team Flagstaff, including, including interns and also volunteers and commissioners who have, who are actually part of Team Flagstaff. Losing one of ours yesterday just hits home. So taking this moment to send love, compassion, sympathy, and also my heart goes out and thoughts and prayers to, to the family and friends of Mr. Brad Peterson. Yeah, and please, I love giving hugs, so if you show up at the meeting, I will give you a hug. On a lighter note, I would like to have a call-out to the public to, if you can, our Flagstaff Shelter Services needs supply for masks, cold, flu tablets, preventative brushes, laundry detergent, and other personal hygiene products. If you have those supply to share, please drop them off at the shelter on Huntington between 9:00 and 3:00 p.m. And lastly, I also want to lift up our, our team of Flagstaff who were directly or indirectly involved in building the Fourth Street Bridge, because that project received an award, and it was received by our partners, the Arizona Department of Transportation. So it's a Quality of Life Community Development category under the American Transportation Awards Competition by Western, Western Region of, Western Region... Western Region of American Association of State Highways and Transportation Official. So the Fourth Street Bridge that we opened last year was recognized for improving safety for drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Again, it's a concrete example of synergy and community collaboration partnership with city, ADOT, and our other transportation partners in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to circle back to your question, it does seem like that to-and-from, maybe we need to return to the very end. I don't think we need... I don't think we need both, and I think we're going to get in some issues with to-and-from for saying something early on and then having a response available for others later on, too. I think there's some concerns on that regard. So if we could save it all up for one bout, if you'd prefer that at the end, that's great. If you'd prefer it at the beginning, then that's great, too, but I really feel we should just have one. Yeah. And sometimes it's nice to have that final ending thing, I feel like, too, to be able to kind of wrap up our thoughts and our ideas. So that would be my suggestion. We just revert to the old way. Yeah. Councilmember Schmidt?
Would liaison reports in your mind stay at the beginning, then?
The liaison reports could stay at the beginning.
Okay, I can go with that. Thank you.
And then we can... And because those also could be related to some of the topics we're talking about for the day. So, you know... Does that sound good to everyone? Okay. Awesome. Well, any other things from the city manager? Housekeeping? Nope?
Not on my end. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.